Of Tuesday, July 8th. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Arnett Talbot.
Here.
Don Walsh. David Melner. John Mylone. Fiona Pearson. Tricia Kramer. Greg Wolfe. Tina Allen. And Jim Jakes. Everyone's present.
Please join me in the pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Lord God, who is God, indivisible, liberating, and just as for all.
Start tonight on a little bit of a somber note in that longtime member of our historic district commission passed away. Helen Wilson was a great community volunteer, and if you knew her, she was also a great person. She will be missed terribly, and her efforts on the commission will also be missed. With that, I'm going to get into an update from the semi-quinsentennial steering committee, which I think we should shorten to the 250th and, yeah, and not make it... How long of a word can you say?
So, my name is Arnett Talbot, 200 Tress Road, also retired. Ron Egliardi is here, and then Diane Calibro, I expect, to be here shortly. The three of us make up the 250th Committee. So I just want to take one minute to say hi, everybody. I miss you. And to go through the proposal that we've been working on. So this is a pretty broad proposal, and we've really used the state's recommendations for their program. However, I do want to add that we are sensitive to both the current budget and the staff workload, so we are looking to counsel for your input and for guidance. So probably the main event that we're proposing would be on July 4th, 2026, which is the actual anniversary. We are suggesting that it's at Bartlam Park. We would move the normal Bennett celebration, reading of the Declaration of Independence, to Bartlam Park. The Bennetts have been at one of our meetings, at least. They're very involved with this. And have it on a Saturday morning. Fortunately, July 4th is a Saturday. We would do it in the morning because we don't want to compete with all of the other Saturday afternoon and evening events that families, the plans that families may have. As part of that program, there are several different elements of it. The ceremony itself would be comments from dignitaries with perhaps some historical facts thrown in. So as officials get up and speak, they'll be actually kind of educating the public as a little bit of information background about the Declaration of Independence. We'd also like to have the reading of the Declaration of Independence, which, of course, the Bennetts do every year. Diane's here. Come on up. Come on, come on.
I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
I was talking to Dick.
That's okay. This is Diane Calibro.
I'm Diane Calibro, 1731 Peck Lane. Hi, everybody. Good evening.
I'm just going through the... So, and we talked about handouts. A lot of people don't actually have a copy of the Declaration. So a handout with a little bit of background, perhaps with the original on one side and typed on the other side, just because I find it very difficult to read the spidery script. And additional activities that we hope would bring in some families, such as a children's parade with the Betsy Ross flag or other historic flags. Perhaps some of the local horse council people would be willing to ride around in period costume. We'd love to have some music. We talked about a fife and drum band, but also recorded music. Opening of the Norton time capsule. And then also, I don't know what the word would be, filling up a new time capsule to have it be prepared to be buried for however many years. We'd love to have local vendors, such as Chef's Bagels or the Donuts places, or food trucks. I'd like to give the local vendors a shot first, so that there's some breakfast foods and some refreshments in the morning. And then lots of decorations, red, white, and blue flowers, which the town has done in the past, and banners. And Andrew has, as staff, as our staff liaison, is happy to work with us on that and also the beautification committee. We'd like this to be rain or shine. If we have to do it with umbrellas, then we have to do it with umbrellas. The momentum is probably going to be lost if we have to wait to have it the next day after the Fourth of July. What we'd also like to do for community outreach is to send letters to key organizations within the community to ask them to consider participating in this program, to have their own event or program. And then we, as the committee, would put that under the umbrella of the town's celebration, such as the Chamber of Commerce, local civic organizations, the faith-based community, and obviously the schools. For support from the town, we would probably want to reach out to specific town departments. I understand that... I know how staff's workloads go, so we wouldn't want to impose too much. But recreation, obviously, John Gollak would be able to assist. The library already has a genealogy program. They could tie it into this program, probably have some Declaration of Independence displays, maybe programs, lectures, or sessions. Arts Place has already been tapped. They would love to be involved in the graphic memoir program, which I will talk about in a minute. Of course, we're going to need Public Works, police, fire, logistics. Senior Center can also do some history programs. And we'd love to get the town committees involved, if possible, Park and Rec, Veterans Advisory Committee. We're actually going to meet with them because it's important. I think that we think that the veterans be involved, that there be some sort of memorial component to this effort, and I'm sure they'll be more than happy to help us out. Beautification Committee, Fine Arts Library Board. We would be asking for a page, sorry, on the town website. Keep it pretty simple, but just a place where people can go because there's no Cheshire Herald anymore. So if we have one spot where the public can go and we can just publicize, you know, QR codes, and publicize it, and just have a page that lists the activities and dates and times, pretty simple. And then there are other programs. The graphic memoir I want to leave till last. We're considering a float in the 2026 Memorial Day Parade, which I think we would obviously need some assistance with that. But those of you who would prefer to ride rather than walk in the heat might want to consider riding on that. Other possibilities: townwide scavenger hunt, themed historic walks, local restaurants having a themed dessert or drink maybe throughout the month of June up until July, some sort of genealogy project, ecumenical services, and the theme for the scarecrow event for this coming fall. If we could have a theme that's Cheshire History 250th and have that be the theme for the scarecrows, would kind of be a great kickoff to let the community know about it. Then the Cheshire Historic Graphic Memoir Project. There's details on the information that you have. I'm going to let Diane speak to that because she's the one who really orchestrated all of this and did the legwork and arranged for Megan, and she's the one who has all of the details. And then, if you have any questions or comments, because as I said, we're looking for guidance. We understand the financial difficulties. We want to know where we stand with that. So, questions? Once, Diane?
Sure. Hi, everyone. Diane Calibro, you're a town historian. I want to talk a little bit about one of the programs that Arts Place offers with an artist illustrator named Megan Jeffrey. And this is a really wonderful program where you capture your own graphic history, your own history, your personal history, through graphics, might as well say, in like almost a comic book format. But it's a fun, really effective way of communicating information where you don't have to read a 300-page novel. You can read something much smaller, volume-wise, with the impact of graphics. One of the things that Ms. Jeffrey and I were talking about was doing a graphic memoir or a graphic history of the town of Cheshire. And what's exciting about that is that graphic memoirs or this graphic novel format is really hot right now. It's something that really resonates with kids, young adults, and it's something that will, I believe, engage that age group in this project. What we're thinking about is something that I believe you got a copy in your packet, of doing something along these lines where various parts of history are captured and expanded. Okay, good. Thank you. Another thing that we were very impressed with was the assembly line that Rashmi had done. Thank you. That Rashmi had done, was it just the year before last, where she engaged so many different groups in the Cheshire community. We'd like to also use that same kind of programming format to work with this. So it would be something that would be a lot of fun. The skill set on it is not rigorous. So you could be someone that comes up with ideas. You could be someone that draws a stick figure. Or you could be someone that applies all of your artistic skills and makes something really graphically amazing. But everyone's product would be amazing through their contribution at the skill level that they feel comfortable with. I believe you saw, you have something that looks like this in your packet. This is an example of Megan Jeffrey's work. She was kind enough to do this for us, and it discusses Edward Augustus Cornwall, and it's her interpretation of a man that was kind of a Renaissance man who did so many different things here in Cheshire. So what was fun about this is that she sat and she came up with an interpretation as we project other people will be able to do going forward with this project. So we think it's very doable. We think it's really engaging. We think it's something that will leave a lasting impression on our town. And also, we don't think that anyone else in the state of Connecticut is doing a project like this. So it would be very unique, and it would be very notable, for example, throughout the state of Connecticut. So we're hoping that it's something that you can review and say, "Yeah, I think that's a great idea. We should go forward with that." Thank you.
First of all, I want to thank the three of you for all your efforts. This is great. I love the presentation. I love the ideas that you've come up with. I personally like the fact that you understand the strain that is on our town staff and the fact that, budget-wise, we got rid of the nice-to-haves, which it's nice to participate in this, but it's not a must-have. So I like the fact that you're piggybacking, to speak, off of an existing event that's been going on for like a dozen years here. To move it to a bigger venue, invite civic service and other organizations. But I'll open it up to my colleagues if they have questions. Mr. Walsh.
First, thank you for all the time and effort you've already put into this. Have you thought about talking with the Kurtz family since they do an annual private fireworks display and maybe make it a little bit bigger?
That was one of the things that we had discussed. It wasn't something that we really wanted to publicize yet because we haven't had the opportunity to talk with the Kurtz family. But yes, we've already spoken with DeAndre. And see if they're willing or if they would want to. If not, if they like having their private event, then that's great. We can help promote it. I don't think it needs to be promoted much in this town, but yes, that is a consideration.
And in terms of a budget, will you guys be creating some kind of a budget that... Because, I mean, I'm assuming you're probably going to need money before our next go-around in the budget.
Yes. And what we really are looking for is some sort of direction from council as to the scope that you'd like to see, and then we can sit down and really crunch the numbers and come up with numbers. There are a couple of smaller grants that we would, will probably come to you asking permission to apply for them. But once we have an idea of the scope of the project, then we'll be coming up with a budget and bringing that to the council. Absolutely.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Don.
Ms. Pearson.
I just wanted to say that the graphic memoir is fabulous. And so I know we have several classes, actually, where graphic memoirs and books are used as subject matter at the university level. I know students love these. It's a great way to get history across. It's creative. It's interesting. And the idea that you're building it like Ravi's collage project, which was phenomenal at Arts Place, that you're using that same model, I think is brilliant. So kudos for your creativity and excited to see what else is developing over the course of the next year.
We will probably need some funding for that project.
Well, maybe.
Mr. Jenks.
Hello there. Good to see you again. And good to see you, Diane.
Hi.
As far... First of all, this is fantastic that we're having this celebration. First of all, that we're going to do something to kind of talk about the history of Cheshire and over the last 250 years. I'm wondering if, in your planning, and I have no idea what this might be, but if it could be something that perhaps each year could be redone or recreated or added to as far as the history of Cheshire, you know, in conjunction with the Declaration of Independence reading or something like that, so that more people can learn about our history in Cheshire. But it's a rich history, and it would be great to have an event like that each year to, you know, just to get people more interested or into our history here in Cheshire. Just an idea, like I said, I don't know what that means for this project necessarily or what it could be, but something that gets repeatable would be nice, you know?
That's an outstanding idea. Thank you.
And as the town historian, that's the person who would probably help spearhead that.
That's true.
And it also helps us in planning because we wanted, we would want to do something that is simple enough to be repeatable without...
Right. I'd also say, Diane, thank you for your donation. On behalf of this committee, thank you for your donation to the committee and this organization.
Oh, sure. Yeah. Oh, it's my pleasure. I feel that strongly about it. And one of the... You've just answered one of the challenges that I've had, which is Cheshire's history is very rich, and there's no way a graphic memoir course or a project such as this would capture everything. But extending it through the years is a perfect solution to that. Thank you.
Ms. Kramer.
I just wanted to say thank you. Just when you thought you were out, we grabbed you right back in. Thank you for the time you've given to the town. And I think the idea of building up through advertising and incorporating the celebration through different events that are hallmark in Cheshire, like the Strawberry Festival, you said a bunch of things, bringing those all together to the cumulative celebration on the July 4th, I think would be a great idea and way to get everybody aware of, you know, what's going to happen. Because I would hate for all this effort to go into it, and then people be like, "What? 250 years of Cheshire?" So the more places that you advertise and celebrate and educate, I think the more appreciation and participation we'll have for July 4th. I think it's a great idea. I can't wait.
Great.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're quite welcome. Thank you. It is good to see all your happy faces. And we'll be back at some point.
I hope so. Thank you. And with that, I'll turn the microphone over to Mr. Donafrio.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I asked for the opportunity tonight to give the council an update on the status of the animal control operations. We've heard over the last seven or eight months a number of different updates on a variety of issues, and I thought, given where we're at in the process, it would be appropriate to kind of give you a recap. First, and I know that a lot of this may be repetitive, but it doesn't really make a lot of sense unless you put it in some kind of a package. So as you know, this all began with the town seizing the 28 dogs at Seven Edith Place back in November of 2022. And the town's goals, from a legal perspective at that point, there were three goals. The first was to remove the 28 dogs from the perilous situation that they were in at Seven Edith Place. The second was to acquire lawful ownership of the dogs so that the dogs could be lawfully placed for adoption. And the third was to protect the town from liability claims by a very unique individual. I don't know what anyone else knows about the former owner of the dogs. We've tracked, going back to November of 2022 to present, numerous criminal and civil matters in which the former owner is a party in multiple states. And there's a wide range of very serious matters to be aware of and to consider when counseling the town as to a strategy to accomplish those three goals that I just articulated. So in order, in Connecticut, to get legal custody, lawful possession, as well as the right to lawful ownership, you have to file an action in Superior Court, okay? There's a specific statute, and within days of when the dogs were seized, the town filed the statutory action in New Haven Superior Court for no other reason than to comply with the statutory requirement that in order to have lawful possession of somebody else's dogs and to gain ownership eventually of those dogs, you have to follow a specific statute. One of the core problems with this entire scenario has been the delays, the timeline on the litigation, okay? So as I said, we filed the action pursuant to 22329A, the general statutes, back in November of 2022. And that came at a time when Ms. Ling had been taken into custody by the U.S. Marshal Service for unrelated matters and was in federal custody in Pennsylvania, okay? So there was a delay in the Superior Court action because of her incarceration. She then, in April of 2023, filed a counterclaim against the town, and then shortly thereafter filed a petition under Chapter 13 of the United States Bankruptcy Code, which resulted in an automatic stay of the Superior Court litigation, and added another series of delays to resolution of the lawful possession and ownership of the dogs. Back in July of 2023, shortly after the bankruptcy petition was filed, the town filed what's known as a petition for relief from the automatic stay. Under certain conditions in the United States Bankruptcy Code, a creditor or a party with an adversarial claim against the bankruptcy debtor can get relief from the stay to continue prosecuting its pre-bankruptcy filing action. So we got relief from stay on July 24th, the same month that the bankruptcy petition was filed, and that led us resume our Superior Court litigation solely with respect to the issue of ownership of the dogs. In other words, you can't pursue the monetary claim, but you can pursue the ownership claim. In September of 2024, the Superior Court litigation was settled, and the bankruptcy court's approval sends the owner of the dogs was a bankruptcy debtor, and the United States Bankruptcy Court for the District of Connecticut had jurisdiction over the issue of the dogs because they were property of the bankruptcy estate. Bankruptcy approval was needed, and bankruptcy approval was obtained in November of 2024. And as you know, thereafter, the town, working with the Connecticut Humane Society, undertook the adoption of the dogs. The litigation itself needed to be terminated, and the way that litigation is terminated in Connecticut Superior Court is by the filing of a withdrawal. So we had the ability to file a withdrawal of our case, and the defendant had the ability to file a withdrawal of her case. Those withdrawals were filed at the end of January. There were numerous delays and attempts to renegotiate the settlement between November and the end of January that delayed that process. So in terms of what the original mission was, it was to get the dogs out of a precarious situation, get legal possession and ownership of the dogs, and get them into a safer environment, and to protect the town from liability claims by somebody who, as I've said, has extensive legal proceedings around the country, federal court. The town council role seems to be something that is not really that well-understood, and maybe that's my fault for not explaining it more frequently. But the town council has a very limited role in this matter, okay? The town council does not hire, discipline, or terminate the animal control officer or the assistant animal control officer. The town charter gives the town council no supervisory authority over those personnel. So the town council has been dealing with this issue primarily because the town council has a public comment item on its agenda, which provides a venue for folks to come and provide public comment, which is their right. When the litigation was pending, I requested multiple times not to have any substantive discussions publicly, okay? And there's multiple reasons for that. First of all, I'm absolutely positive that none of you know 99% or more of what I know about the former owner of the dogs. And having a comment that, as well-intentioned as it may be, that undermines those three goals from the initial mission would be very problematic for us and would further delay the adoption of the dogs. So that was really the first concern that I had during the litigation, was that, hey, the town council really doesn't know the details, just like you don't know the details of, you know, tax appeals that I'm litigating, zoning appeals that I'm litigating, construction contracts that I'm negotiating, claims that I'm asserting or defending on behalf of the town, right? So my job is to protect the town from a scenario where something is said that is used to further delay resolution of the litigation, or worse yet, be used as a basis for not surrendering ownership of the dogs and abandoning the claims. And it's been a dynamic, multi-pronged legal process, okay? You've had the Superior Court litigation. You've had the bankruptcy court litigation. You've had criminal matters involving the former dog owner and her son. You've had the Department of Agriculture regulatory matter, which I'll talk about in a minute. And you've had personnel matters. And it simply isn't possible for any town council, which is comprised of laypeople who are volunteers, to be fully up to speed on all aspects of the matter or of most other complex town matters. So my preference has been to avoid any kind of a detailed discussion when the speakers aren't privy to all the relevant facts. Another core position that I've taken throughout the last eight months has been confidentiality. And the public doesn't know most of the facts about how the town went about executing the mission that I started with. And that's the way it is with most of the business that's done by any municipal or governmental agency. It's got nothing to do with the public in as much as it has to do with all the work that goes on behind the scenes on a daily basis with regard to these types of matters. But in this particular case, there were three primary reasons for me insisting on confidentiality, okay? The first is, all licensed attorneys in the state of Connecticut are subject to the Connecticut Rules of Professional Conduct. And one of the most significant rules of professional conduct is Rule 1.8. Rule 1.8 is kind of the most important rule that you have to know as a lawyer. And what Rule 1.8 says is very simple and very brief, okay? Rule 1.8A, I'm sorry. Keep calling it Rule 1.8. Rule 1.6A, "A lawyer shall not reveal information relating to representation of a client unless the client gives informed consent. The disclosure is impliedly authorized in order to carry out the representation, or the disclosure is permitted by subsections B, C, or D." B is if you... They're very specific exceptions that... They're very specific exceptions that don't apply in this instance. So, you know, first of all, there's an ethical responsibility with regard to confidentiality. And that's in addition to the attorney-client privilege. We talk about privilege all the time, whether it's in the context of an FOI disclosure, whether it's in the context of an executive session. But the confidentiality rule under the Rules of Professional Conduct is in addition to the attorney-client privilege. Secondly, and perhaps more importantly for your purposes, none of the goals that we set out to accomplish could be accomplished if the people that we're in litigation with have access to our strategy and details of what we plan to do and what we were doing. It's really simple. You don't divulge details publicly that undermine your strategy and your work product. That's why there's a very specific executive session exception under FOIA in 1-206. One of the few executive session rights you have is to discuss strategy and negotiations with regard to pending claims and litigation. And the whole public policy for that, if you go back to early '70s and look when FOIA was passed, you'll see in the legislative history that it was so that municipalities weren't undermining themselves by telling people that they were trying to protect themselves against what it was they planned to do. And the third is, as I've mentioned, it's been very dynamic. There's a lot of moving parts that went on in that litigation, okay? So the litigation, as I indicated, was withdrawn at the end of January. So we don't have to worry about the litigation anymore. We got full releases. So there's no reason not to talk about the litigation, okay? The core mission was expanded on December 19th. I received a call on December 16th from the attorney, and you know this because I told you this at the December 23rd special meeting and again in January in public session. I received the call on December 16th from the lawyer for the Department of Agriculture asking for a meeting with the town to discuss the animal control facility. They asked for a meeting on December 19th, so early on the morning of December 19th. The town manager, the police chief, Lou Dagastin from my office, Lieutenant Miller, and I met here in Town Hall with representatives of the department and their attorney. And at that meeting, we were presented with a proposed consent order, okay? And we were asked to sign it by the next day. Now, the first issue I had was that the town manager does not have authority under the charter to sign a consent order without the town council's approval. So the first concern was, he can't sign anything unless we have a properly noticed town council meeting. And, you know, under FOIA, if it's going to be completely remote, which I was thinking it might have to be because it was the week before the holidays, you have to give 48 hours notice. Weekends don't count. That takes us to Monday. Even if it was going to be in person on a Friday night, if we could get a quorum in person, I was concerned about it and expressed that concern in the meeting. But I also was very concerned about the fact that we hadn't read it. It was handed to us at that meeting and we had not read it, okay? So we expressed an interest in cooperating, but we also expressed the need to review it and obviously have a properly noticed and called town council meeting. And I went back to my office and I read what was handed to us at the meeting, which you've all seen, the proposed consent order. And at that meeting on December 19th, we asked the representatives of the Department of Agriculture if they could share with us their report, their investigation, work product. And they respectfully declined because at the time, they told us their investigation was ongoing. So we had a document that set forth several statutes that the town was alleged to have violated. And the town was being asked to sign that document. Now, going back to the Rules of Professional Conduct, which all licensed attorneys, including yours truly, are subject to and which in my 35 years of doing this, I have not violated, Rule 1.3, one sentence. "A lawyer shall act with reasonable diligence and promptness in representing a client." And there's some official commentary to the rules. And the comment on Rule 1.3 includes the following. "A lawyer must pursue a matter on behalf of a client despite opposition, obstruction, or personal inconvenience to the lawyer and take whatever lawful and ethical measures are required to vindicate a client's cause or endeavor. A lawyer must also act with commitment and dedication to the interests of the client and with zeal and advocacy upon the client's behalf." So mindful of my ethical obligations, mindful of the fact that we had not seen the investigation, mindful of the fact that we had no investigation of our own, mindful of the fact of what the statute said, I had a simple request, an edit. Instead of saying "the town has violated," or let's use the exact language, respondent "has violated" the following statutory and regulatory requirements for the Cheshire Animal Control Facility. My request was to change that to "the Department of Agriculture alleges that the respondent has violated." Because at that point, that's what those were to me. Those were allegations, okay? One of the... And I apologize if this seems like you're in law school tonight, but one of the core aspects of due process, which there had been none at that point. There had been no due process. One of the core elements of due process is understanding the rules of evidence and admissibility of evidence, okay? And if you've ever heard the phrase "that's hearsay," it comes from the notion that any out-of-court statement that's offered to prove the truth of the matter asserted in that statement is hearsay, okay? And the reason why hearsay is generally inadmissible is because you can't cross-examine a piece of paper. You don't have the ability to know what questions were asked, to vet the answers, to determine the credibility, bias, prejudice of a witness. So cross-examination is at the... Any lawyer that tries cases knows you win or lose cases on cross-examination. Because people can get up on direct and say whatever. It's cross that really gets the truth out. So mindful of the fact that I had nothing from the investigation that was done by the agency asking my client to sign this document and the fact that we had no investigation of our own yet and the fact that all I had was hearsay. I asked that it be changed from "has violated" to "the Department of Agriculture alleges." The rest of the consent order in terms of the statutory references and whatnot were untouched, okay? That was the request that was made. The department agreed to make that edit. They made that edit. And then they sent it back with another edit that simply added, because of my edit, that we weren't contesting the sufficiency of the allegations outlined in the consent order, to which I said, "Fine, but add for purposes of this consent order." Because as the town attorney, I'm privy to all types of transactions that the town is involved in. I cannot put the town in a situation where the town, without due process, agrees that it violated a statute and then turn around in a grant or a bond scenario and have the town be ineligible because I was sloppy, okay? And I'm not sloppy. I do my job, okay? And so that's the idea behind those edits to the consent order. And the department was very clear that they were there to work with us. They were there to bring the facility into compliance. The town shared the department's goals of bringing the facility into compliance. The town shared the goals that were outlined in the consent order. So we, on the 23rd of December, had a noticed special meeting of the council. And the council unanimously approved the consent order. Mr. Kimball signed it that day. It was sent over to DOAG. And DOAG signed it on the 24th. And the consent order went into effect. And the town has been complying with the consent order. Now, as I mentioned, the scope of the mission expanded on December 19th. Because now the town, the town manager in particular, was advised of specific concerns and allegations of statutory violations by the Department of Agriculture, the regulatory agency with jurisdiction over the animal control officer. So I don't know if it was that day or it was the next day. It was decided that there would be an independent investigation of those allegations. The timing of it was a concern to me because we did not have the withdrawal of the litigation. So my simple request was, the litigation's going to be withdrawn any day now. Let's wait until the litigation is withdrawn and then we'll engage the investigator. So the litigation was finally withdrawn on January 31st. The independent investigator was engaged by me, not by the town council. It's not your investigation. It's my investigation on behalf of the town manager. That's why you've had no meetings, you've had no discussions. I don't even know if you know the name of the investigator, to be honest with you. And he hasn't spoken to any of you, okay? But it's my investigation and I provided a very, very broad scope of the investigation, as I think I mentioned to you before, that goes not only to the allegations in the consent order but to a variety of aspects of the entire animal control operation, including supervision, okay? And the independent investigator was engaged the first week of February, okay? So less than a week after the litigation was terminated, he was formally engaged. And I deemed an independent investigation necessary and recommended it to Sean for several reasons. First, the obvious one. The allegations in the consent order are serious allegations. And we need to figure out not only what happened, but we need to know the whole story and not bits and pieces of it, okay? And we need somebody with absolutely no connection to the town of Cheshire, no prior relationship with the town of Cheshire, no connection with any of the witnesses or any of the personnel involved. And again, you don't get that from documents. Documents are hearsay, okay? An investigator interviews people with personal knowledge. That's the way an investigation is done. There's best practices with respect to, whether it's a corporate investigation, whether it's a government investigation. I've done dozens of them in 35 years. I've got a list of best practices that I follow every investigation. It doesn't matter what type of investigation it is. If it involves personnel, there's a very specific roadmap that needs to be followed for reasons that I'll get into in a minute, okay? So you can't underestimate the importance of the independent investigator determining who to interview and what questions to ask and how to conduct the interview. I don't rush the investigation. I don't tell the investigator who to talk to, who not to talk to. I don't contact the investigator to ask questions about what kind of information they're getting. It's totally within the realm of the investigator's discretion to determine all of that, okay? And one of the reasons I do that, aside from it being the ethical thing to do, has to do with, again, doing my job, okay? When you're doing an investigation that involves personnel for a town, you're investigating the performance of public employees. Public employees, which in this case, are governed by a collective bargaining agreement. A collective bargaining agreement that provides a basis for discipline, a basis for termination. It's not like the private sector, okay? If you're not familiar with the phrase "just cause," it means you can't just terminate somebody because, okay? Just cause ties an employer's hands, eliminates a lot of the discretion that an employer has, and requires an impeccable investigation that's built not on hearsay but on firsthand statements from witnesses. So understanding the just cause standard and the case law interpreting it in Connecticut vis-à-vis public employment is critical to understanding how to conduct one of these investigations. So we always make sure, before we hire an investigator, that they understand the collective bargaining agreement, they understand just cause, they understand what the legal standard's going to be, and they understand what standard they should be applying when they're making determinations and forming opinions and reaching conclusions in the context of their report. Confidentiality during the investigation is critical, right? So I told you confidentiality is important during litigation because you don't want the party on the other side of the V to know what your plans and strategies are. Similarly, in the employment world, any indication that an outcome has been predetermined, any indication that anything has been prejudged, any indication that the investigator is being steered a particular way is improper. It's not part of our process. It undermines the intended result and it's a complete waste of the town's money. So the town council has not been briefed on the results of the investigation yet. The investigation was completed last week. The last interview was completed last week. We just conferred for the first time with Town Labor Council this afternoon regarding next steps. And there's no draft report. There's no written report yet. We conferred with Labor Council today. There's a process that will be followed. And to the extent that there'll be personnel action involved, it will be in accordance with collective bargaining agreements and in accordance with Connecticut law. And that's the only way that it will be done, okay? I mean, aside from the ethical and strategic considerations that are relevant to deciding whether to discuss particular aspects of litigation and personnel matters in public, you also have to be a little bit practical, okay? Why would you ever divulge something publicly that could help the people that you're upset with? Wouldn't that be sloppy? Wouldn't that be reckless? Why would we ever go down the road of doing something that we know may engender some goodwill with the audience? But at the end of the day, that's not putting the interests of the town first. And while I'm subject to the Rules of Professional Conduct, everybody up here is subject to the code of ethics. And you're not allowed to put your personal interests ahead of the town's interest. So we have a scenario where it's not your employee to discipline or supervise, not your employees, I should say, okay? To discipline or to supervise or to hire or fire. It's not your investigation. And if, you know, if you have specific questions for me about the process or about anything that I've laid out for you tonight, I'm happy to answer those questions with the understanding that if I think it's going to undermine the town's interest in a personnel matter, I'm not going to tell you an answer. Because that's my job. And it doesn't, to me, it doesn't matter to me what anybody says or what anybody writes or what anybody posts on Facebook. I do my job. And if you don't think I'm doing my job, you can get somebody else to do it and see if they'll depart from their ethical duties. But I won't. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Donafrio. Moving to Item 3B, public comment. We will hear from the public at the microphone. Please state your name, address, and limit your comments to three minutes.
Jean Melendez, 1425 Waterbury Road, Cheshire, Connecticut. I had written something I was going to talk about, but Mr. D'Onofrio's narrative sort of warrants a different way to go.
Ms. Melendez, would you just tilt that down a little bit?
Sure.
Thank you very much.
We understand the story prior to the town seizing the dogs, but nothing that you spoke about here talked about seizing those dogs. What happened? When the evidence got here, you've said that you have a client, you need to defend that client, the town council doesn't know anything, they don't do hiring. This whole story becomes more and more twisted for the public and the taxpayers. Somebody is responsible. We voted for the town council. I appreciate that you're representing your clients, but someone needs to do something. And when you say the town council didn't know anything, we know, back in October, folks got pictures, letters. Yes, they might not have been able to investigate at that time, but DOAG did those investigations too. There isn't sort of a magic, your investigator, your firm that you chose, doesn't have a magic wand to provide the real truth versus the truth that everybody has seen over time. And let's be honest, that investigator, he reports to you. That investigator will put in, the investigator specifically said to many of the witnesses that I give this report to the town, and the town decides what to do with it. That isn't how it was with DOAG. You get to control the narrative, like you've controlled the narrative. And although I don't have all the points, Mr. D'Onofrio, you said it is unethical to talk to the public about that. Other towns have had investigations regarding their police, regarding other folks, and they have communicated with the town. They have shared with the town. It isn't your way or no way. We have a vested interest. We've been here forever, asking about these animals, asking what will happen. Most of the time, we're ignored under the premise that, geez, we shouldn't know, that's not our purview to know, and now tonight, who is in charge? I mean, if we can't talk to the town council about things that happen in the town, and they don't have the power to do anything, who has the power to do anything? In any event, I'll use some of my extra time to say, we didn't get documents that we asked for under FOIA. We should've gotten them. The chief left, and he gave me a drive with 37 of his emails? Over five years? How is 37 emails over five years appropriate? Not to mention, he stripped the attachments out of them.
Time, Ms. Melendez.
Yep.
Excuse me, sir. Can I just respond to those comments?
Sure.
First of all, in terms of relying on the DOAG consent order, and the couple of pages that were attached to that consent order, I thought I made clear that if we're gonna take personnel action, there's a just cause standard. Who's gonna testify at that just cause hearing? Who's gonna testify? Not DOAG. That's why the independent investigation is necessary, because if there is personal action taken, I've done dozens of Loudmills hearings, dozens, okay? Somebody needs to testify. Likewise, if you're at an unemployment hearing, who's gonna testify? If you're at an arbitration, who's gonna testify? There's a fundamental lack of understanding of how collective bargaining agreements work, and what the discipline process is. Number two, I could not object more to the repeated suggestion that I'm controlling the investigator, okay? The investigator can find whatever he wants. I have absolutely no skin in the game, and the suggestion that I, you just don't know me, you don't know my practice, you don't know the way I work, I'm tired of the suggestion that I'm the puppet master here, okay? The investigator is a very highly-regarded, tremendously experienced professional, who wouldn't even do the job if somebody was trying to control him, okay? And on the FOIA front, since that was brought up tonight, I spoke with the attorney at FOIC a few weeks ago, went through what's been provided, what hasn't been provided, and why, and asked for a list of what is remaining, and I haven't received anything. And the town, by the way, did not receive the FOI complaint from FOIC until late May. So, we didn't even have it until late May, because there was some snafu when the complainant filed it, there wasn't an address provided or something, and so it sat up at the FOIC for several months before we even got it. So, after I got it, I reached out to the ombudsman, which is the process, to find out what other documents exist. We can't provide stuff that doesn't exist, okay? And there were documents that were withheld from one of the requests, based on attorney-client privilege, which is a proper exemption under FOIA. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello there, Jim Block.
Sorry, sorry, Jim.
Hold that thought.
I got it.
Mr. Jenks.
Jim's gonna go first.
Okay, next, Jim, coming up.
What Jim before another?
Just wanted, Mr. Attorney D'Onofrio, I just wanted to clarify, so it's not that nothing is going to happen. The suggestion was that nothing is going to happen, but that's not the case, right? Where, obviously, we had the investigation, and the town is going to decide what happens from this point forward. That's how this is gonna happen.
I have no idea why the default would be, nothing's gonna happen, any more than I would have an idea if everyone came up to the microphone saying, everybody's getting fired, okay? They're not privy to the investigation, they're not privy to my thinking, they're not privy to the town manager's thinking. The reason they're not privy to it is, as I said, and I'm really adamant about this, I'm not saying anything that will then be used against the town in a hearing involving personnel. If the goal here is to get this fixed, then it has to be done in accordance with Connecticut law, and in accordance with the collective bargaining agreement. And I have no problem with folks that don't read the collective bargaining agreement, okay? Which, by the way, is on the town website, okay? I have no problem with that. The problem I have is the insinuation or outright express statement that we somehow have concocted this whole thing as a foregone conclusion that nothing's gonna happen, because that's false.
Thank you.
Mr. Block, thank you for your patience.
Hi, Jim Block, 60 Contour Drive, Cheshire. Good evening, folks. I thank the town attorney for his explanations. I learned a lot about the legalities. I appreciate his explanation, the time he took. I would like to mention that, I guess there's a balance between what he says, and I know things have, everything can't be public comment, public discussion, public hanging. I understand that. On the other hand, we do not vote for the town attorney. We vote for the ladies and gentlemen sitting up here, and you are the ones we naturally take out of our wrath and expect, and compliments when things go well, and expect the town to be run properly. So, I do not think in any way you're insulated from running the town and terminating people when they perform abysmally, if that is indeed the case. I know you guys do not directly do the termination, you do not call someone in the office, say, I'm the mayor, I'm firing you, but I've also been around towns, although not in Connecticut, in New Jersey, to know that the word is passed down at times, that something has to happen, it's to the town manager, and then it gets done. I'm aware that there are complexities, collective bargaining agreement, that I am not privy to, and should not be privy to all the facts and arguments. Down the road, though, if nothing is done, and then people are left to deal with the council, and say, why was nothing done, or who is responsible, or who is silencing who? I, again, I get all the news from Facebook. There's not, it's a good way to get news, it's a good way to spread ugly rumors, it's a good way to attack people. But two people who, three people who, I think they were from both parties, they're on the zoning board, I think, and they said, simple question, go around the council and ask each council member if they support releasing the report to the public, the entire report. I realize that probably can't be done if there's action to be taken, or a lack of action to be taken, but at some point, it should be done, and I wanted to just do that. If there's no answer, there's no answer. Mr. Malone, do you feel the report should be allowed, released at some point to the entire town?
I'm happy to answer. I've listened, and I appreciate everyone coming here. I think that our town attorney's done an excellent job explaining legalities. I understand that people here are generally concerned about the welfare and the care of the dogs, so I understand that fully. I would defer the timing of any release of any results to working with the town attorney so that whatever has to be done locally, if there's a personnel matter that gets taken care of properly, and efficiently, and legally. And then I do believe there should be a release of what the findings are.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Vellabre.
I agree, I mean, I
I feel like I'm doing your job going around the room.
Yeah, there you go. But I, you know, and I understand, and I think Jeff's done a good job of explaining where we are and why we are where we are, but I do agree with Mr. Malone as well, that, yes, we need to make sure that we comply with whatever legal requirements we have to do, but we have to get to the spot where
Hi, Mr. Block, and I think we'll just go down and give a yes or no.
That sounds good. I thank you for your time.
Yep, thank you. But I agree, it has to be released.
Walsh?
Thank you. I'm gonna agree with my colleagues here that, you know, the townspeople are the ones who are paying for this, and will wanna know what's gonna happen. But there's also, listening to our attorney, which we have to listen to our attorney, because he understands the legalities better than any of us, there's, if there's personnel issues that have to be addressed, they can't be addressed in a public forum. So, I would say that, yes, hopefully, we will get you all answers in the near future.
Yeah, I just want to thank folks in the room. This has been an incredibly difficult process, and I appreciate Representative D'Onofrio explaining exactly why things have dragged as they have. And we look forward to hearing the results finally, and receiving a written investigation. Do we have a sense of when the written investigation will be provided to us, or no at this time?
Not at this time.
But I can guarantee that, based on the evidence, we will do what is right by the animals and people in our community.
I think it's interesting that this is coming from members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, but the, but, you know, and I also, I take offense to the notion that, you know, we determined at some point that this would not be made public. We don't know yet. And I agree with the rest of my colleagues that whatever we can make public, should be public. But you've heard from our attorney tonight, the reasons why we can or can't do that at some point. So, that should suffice for now.
I believe when something can be released, it should be released, and protect all parties that need to be protected, and inform all parties that need to be informed, including the panel.
I do believe that the report, in a redacted, if necessary, form should be released, but I will take the advice of the town attorney as to when and how that is done.
I have always taken the stance, that transparency is our job. I remain committed to that. I find the allegations against us to be highly disturbing. As you heard Mr. D'Onofrio say, said, we don't have the information. So, the silence that you're getting from us is simply because we have nothing to share with you. I am also committed that if there is a decision that this council needs to make, it will be made with care, consideration, and not quickly, simply because you are begging for an answer, or begging for a certain outcome. It will be done with diligence. And I am committed to being as transparent as legally possible.
Last but not least, I support the release of the written report, Mr. Block.
Thank you, sir.
And with that?
Well, I'd like to thank the attorney and the council for being, I mean, answering some questions, explaining some things to us. Mr. Attorney, you spoke about ethics and whatnot.
Let me just interrupt you. For the clerk, would you please do your name and address?
Tony Bagliori, 1191 Meriden Avenue, Southern
Thank you.
So, Mr. Attorney, you spoke about ethics, and I appreciate you giving the explanation and explaining, and it's just been frustrating, six or seven months for these people not knowing. I mean, I came into this as an animal rescue person, I don't know the role of the council. I don't know, I mean, from an outsider's point of view, as a rescuer, I mean, it just looks like blatant corruption, because, given the seriousness of the allegations, you spoke about ethics and just cause, but given the seriousness of the allegations in question, isn't it standard that the person accused of these allegations and her supervisor would be suspended during the investigation for no other reason but to protect the public? When the seriousness of these allegations exist, and the person is still serving in a position of trust? I personally, I would be horrified if my animals ended up in the Cheshire shelter. So, shouldn't these people be suspended during the investigation to protect the public?
Thank you. The question of whether or not to suspend somebody, suspension is a form of discipline. So, again, you would evaluate it under the context of the collective bargaining agreement that the individuals are covered by, and determine whether or not suspension is warranted. You still would need an investigation to support the adverse decision, because the employee has rights under the CBA to grieve it, arbitrate it, et cetera. You know, in terms of the nature of the position, the animal control officer, and the census at the facility, I mean, it all, it's, you really have to look at it on a case-by-case basis. I know there's been some reference to other municipalities and other places that have suspended people or terminated people. It's different if you have, you know, in other towns I represent, for example, if we had an employee arrested, charged with a crime, typically, we would put that employee on administrative leave. Even if it was unrelated to the performance of the job while we do an investigation, we would determine probably paid administrative leave during the investigation. You know, this employee, none of the employees in the town of Cheshire were charged with any crimes. So, you have to look at the nature of the allegations, and, you know, the facility versus the care of the animal, and any supervisory personnel that are involved, and evaluate it in the context of the collective bargaining agreement, and the nature of the job, and the lack of any criminal charges.
I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but as far as if this same incident had happened in the private world, we certainly know the probable cause exists for an arrest. It's just, it's at the discretion of a prosecutor to make that choice, it's at the discretion of a judge, or the state, rather than prosecute, would rather seek compliance?
The process in Connecticut for charging someone with any crime is for a complainant to go to the police, or go to an agency that has jurisdiction, and request the state's attorney's office to issue an arrest warrant. So, that's not something that the town is involved in in any way, shape, or form. The town doesn't have the ability to issue arrest warrants, doesn't get involved in decisions about whether to issue arrest warrants. That's prosecutorial discretion. That's the state's attorney's office that makes those decisions.
So, basically, somewhere along the line, someone chose not to prosecute this, even though the probable cause does exist. And, like I say, it's just, the part that's just very disturbing is that these people who did this horrible atrocious act, they're in a position of trust, and they're still in that position now, which leaves everyone at risk, and their animals. I mean, these are serious allegations, and even though the state, the state, the town, they decided to not prosecute, which is their option, it's just, it leaves the public open to it's just, it leaves the public open to risk.
I just want to clarify. You said the town chose not to prosecute. As I said before, the town has no role in the decision to arrest someone, in the decision to issue or not issue an arrest warrant. The town role would be if a state's attorney signed off on an arrest warrant and it was given to Cheshire PD to make the arrest. But the decision not to issue an arrest warrant was not something that the town had any involvement or jurisdiction in. So, you know, again, it's, you asked about the private sector. Most employees in the private sector are what's called at-will employees, which means the employer can terminate them with no cause. Public employee, under a collective bargaining agreement, it's the opposite. You have to have just cause. And there's a bunch of steps that are in a collective bargaining agreement that have to be followed in order to discipline or terminate somebody. And then the employee has rights, whether it be at the grievance level, at the arbitration level, litigation, unemployment compensation commission. The employee has a series of remedies that are available. So if you don't, you know, dot your i's and cross your t's, then all you've really done is spend a lot of time and money. I mean, there's scenarios where, you know, a public employee gets terminated and the process isn't followed and the public employee gets hundreds of thousands of dollars of back pay and their job back. So it's not as easy as just saying, hey, you know, we've got this, we've got this DOAG report from August that says all these things were going on, you're out of here. It doesn't, it doesn't work that way. And even if it did work that way, I think you have to understand that if you consider the animal control operation inclusive of the facility to be a problem, in order to really figure out how to solve the problem, you really need to know all aspects of it. And, you know, I think that some of the points that you raise are fair points. And I think the big impediment here is understanding the difference between a public employee and a private sector employee.
Mr. Bagliari, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your help.
Good evening. Andrea Karen, 801 11 o'clock Road, Fairfield, Connecticut. And I'm with Desmond Zarmy, as you can tell. Short statement, and I really believe two short questions. I just want to say, it seems to me that the very person charged with the welfare of those animals being directly culpable for their physical and likely emotional decline and deaths has failed her job duties at their very core, especially having spent so many years in this arena. I just don't see any claim that can excuse that. That's my statement. I appreciate that you're answering questions. And I do have just two finer points that you may have answered and I missed. Does the investigative report offer any recommendations or conclusions, or is it simply an assembly of interviews? And that's just a term I'm using. And my other question is, how will the findings and the ultimate disposition of this be determined?
May I answer? The first question was, does the investigator just report interviews or does the investigator make findings and reach conclusions? The investigator makes findings and reaches conclusions. And then in terms of how the personnel decision is ultimately processed, under the town charter, the town manager is the chief executive officer of the town and has responsibility for these types of personnel decisions.
So it's a conversation between that person and the union leader, say? I mean, is it, like, literally those two people? I mean, I just, I'm trying to picture this in my mind.
Yeah, I mean, there's a number of different ways that it could go, and I really don't want to get into any details that reveal any strategies or plans.
It's not a court proceeding or anything? It's internal?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Karen.
Good evening. Karen Schnitzer, 18 Courier Place. I'll just make this short. First of all, to Attorney DiNofrio, I just want to thank you for your time and diligence in this matter and for doing this right and working so hard over these past months. And I just want to say that I am suitably impressed with your lawyerly awesomeness. That's how I'm going to describe it. And I thoroughly enjoyed your class this evening. It was excellent. I learned some things. And to Town Council, all members of Town Council and our town manager, I want to say thank you for your patience and concern over these past many months as well. You really have been awesome. And thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schnitzer.
Hello, Dan Knutson, 48 Mount Sanford Road, Cheshire. I wanted to speak on the first order of business on the agenda, the draft commitment letter and self-assessment for Cheshire to participate in the Charge Smart program. I'm representing the Energy Commission who did make a motion on the last meeting that we would, we support it and we make a concurring endorsement with the Sustainability Committee, who also would like to see the town proceed with the Charge Smart program. And I just, personally, I'm a frugal person, so I hate to see things built today that, where they don't put in the wires that are going to be needed for a charger in five or 10 years, you know, and that it gets much more expensive to do it in the future. So I'd like to see the town be a little proactive and this is a free way to look at what is being done. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Knutson.
Good evening. Karen Scala, 55 Lewis Drive, Meriden. Lewis, L-O-U-I-S, not L-E-W-I-S. I have to change everything I wrote here. I found what Attorney DiNofrio said very interesting. I didn't realize what had happened and how this all came about. But I think what everybody is looking at is, you know, I just don't, I have to say that I really just don't get it. I don't understand why this has gone on so long. This is an issue where 28 dogs, or plus dogs, were at the Cheshire pound for two years or more and something went very wrong. We need to find out what happened and who's responsible. Not going back to the owner and all that. I understand that. And I think that's what everybody wants to know. Who's responsible for this? And I hear what you're saying too, that personnel matters are, you know, taken into consideration, collective bargaining. I get that too. But I'm from Meriden and I don't know, eight months of this? This is the first time I've been able to get here to look at what's going on. And it just seems like there's so much evidence here, hard evidence. You don't do internal investigations here? I mean, it's the police department, she doesn't fall under Internal Affairs? That's, I don't get it. I really don't. It's like a waste of time. And do you have a code of ethics here? Because I tried to look that up. I found a code of ordinances. I served on the Code of Ethics in Meriden, the Board of Ethics. We have a specific code of ethics. Does Cheshire have one? You know, and I know you guys on the council. People, you know, they elect you, they want you to, you know, convey the interest that the public has. They want to know what went wrong here. And whoever is responsible needs to be accountable and accept the consequences. I don't think it's that difficult. But I do appreciate listening to what went wrong, but got to get to the nitty-gritty, I would think. Thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, hi, Lori Barnes, 532 East Johnson Avenue. So, Attorney DiNofrio, I really appreciate your explanation. Like, it helped me understand a lot better. It doesn't really matter, but... So I respect and understand everybody's position. And that's my personal opinion, not that that matters. So I'm going to stand on that. I actually have a question, and maybe you guys can help me. This has nothing to do with the dogs. Phew, thank God. Whew, everybody, take a breath, man. I have that new development that's been being built, that lovely development down there, and Stonebridge there, okay? And I'm on East Johnson. And I can't get out of my road now for a good 15 minutes every morning that I have to go somewhere. And I see them doing the construction, and I don't know who to talk to. And I went to a couple of people at the town to ask them a couple of questions because I just don't know who to ask. Like, I'm like, with the amount of traffic that's going to be coming through, I actually met with Lieutenant Miller at my home a year ago, and I've not heard back from him since. I had expressed concern to him about the speeding. I've talked with the Cheshire police. I'm like, I have a double driveway. Easily a car passed going 80 past my house yesterday. And I'm like, for the love of God. So I'm just concerned about the traffic and all the extra cars that are coming through. It's just, so if you have any advice for me, I'm concerned.
Mr. Kimball?
With respect to the road reconstruction on East Johnson-
Yeah.
-the engineering department is, the engineering department, the town engineer is responsible for that project, and I can put you in touch with him.
Who's that?
His name is Merrick Kement. He's the town engineer.
Okay.
And they're supervising that project. And I certainly sympathize with the traffic that is ongoing during the construction. It's not forever.
Yeah, because when the trucks come to the end now-
Yeah.
-because when they come to the end, you can't even get over in the left lane for, like, 15 minutes. I'm like, whoa.
Yeah. It's a full-depth reconstruction of the entire road as opposed to a normal mill and pave. So it is, it has to be brought up to a standard that can support all the heavy truck traffic on East Johnson.
Right, but do they mean, like, why?
Yeah, it's a more involved project, but it's not a forever-
Fix.
Yeah, well, it will be a forever fix. It's not a forever traffic problem. It should be addressed with the inconvenience. Thank you. With respect to, they are being diverted. The trucks can't go one direction, so they're having to go the other direction right now. But again, Merrick, our town engineer, can give you a little more information. I'll put you in touch with him.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Barnes. Yep, Mr. Jenks.
Ms. Barnes, I would also say this is a good time to announce, our town manager's going to mention a little bit later in his report, but the multimodal transportation plan project that we're going to be kicking off on July 22. There's a meeting at the library, July 22, between 7:00 and 9:00. It'll be the first public workshop where we're kind of beginning to put together a plan for making our roads safer and, you know, better biking, better walking.
That's what I meant with-
Slowing people down, that kind of thing, so.
I was asking even about, like, crosswalks because of the farming. It's so dangerous down. I see people speeding through and the farmers have to cross and the employees have to, and I asked, I said, not just my road, but even so-
It's a problem all over town. So come to this meeting on the 22nd and-
Okay.
-be a part of the workshop.
All right, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Moving on to item number four, the approval of minutes of the June 10, 2025 Town Council regular meeting and the July 1, 2025 Town Council capital budget workshop. I will accept a motion, Mr. Jenks, and seconded by Ms. Pearson. All those in favor, motion passes unanimously by those present. Item number five is the consent calendar for July 8. Mr. Jenks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Be resolved that Town Council approves resolution number 070825-1, the consent calendar for July 8, 2025. Be resolved, Town Council approves the consent calendar for July 8, 2025 as follows.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Mr. Velleber, thank you. All those in favor, motion passes unanimously by those present. Item number six, items removed from consent calendar, there is none. Item number seven is the school building committee update. And Mr. Rosenblatt is available. And as Mr. Rosenblatt is speaking, we're going to have some videos on screen, I believe, of drone footage. Mr. Martelli?
Okay. Greg Rosenblatt, 110 Bellamy Road, the vice chair of the Next Generation School Building Committee. And we're going to portray the drones. And I also have some pictures of the current status of the school, if we want to see those as well. As I said when I was here in May, both schools remain under budget and on time for completion. The site and building construction for the new Norton School is scheduled to be completed July 15, 2026. Approximately 14.5% of building construction has been completed, and approximately 25% of the site work has been completed. Demolition of the old Norton School is still scheduled for completion by November 11, 2026. The site and building construction for the Barnum School is scheduled for completion by July 16, 2026. Approximately 13% of building construction has been completed, and approximately 26% of the site work has been completed. Regarding the excess topsoil at Norton School, approximately 1,500 cubic yards of clean topsoil has been removed, and the remainder of the clean topsoil is scheduled to be removed this week, subject to weather delays. The contaminated topsoil still awaits confirmation of the proper disposal site, and it'll be removed once that site is confirmed. Lastly, the architects have prepared preliminary selections of the furniture, fixtures, and equipment. And they'll prepare a detailed proposal during the summer with the working group and full school building committee to make final selections during fall 2025. If you'd like, I can pass around, this is what the architects came up with as preliminary fixtures and furniture.
Again, it's preliminary, it's subject to approval and voting on by the full building committee.
Okay. Any questions?
Questions from colleagues? Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Thank you. Appreciate all the hard work you guys are doing. And I do like to hear that we're under budget. I hope to hear that every month.
Hopefully, it comes up every month, yes.
Have we gotten a clear picture about the additional percentage from the state, whether it will cover the entire?
There was an approval of the excess, you know, the excess 15%. The exact amount, I don't think we know yet. Supposedly in July, the first check's supposed to come through. And from that, we'll then know, you know, the full amount that they're reimbursing or the excess reimbursement.
So the public understands, and I know Mr. Jaskot could probably explain this better, but, I mean, although it's under budget, it's not like we're getting money back. We just won't be bonding as much as we need to, correct?
Right.
Yes.
Thank you. Pearson?
Yes.
I'm just going to ask, because I see Karen Schnitzer, Chair of our Environment Commission, in the audience here. I know that there was interest in terms of the plantings that are going to take place. I know that's far in advance, but I don't know, have you been involving the committees or commissions in terms of plantings when it comes time? Beautification Committee and Environment Commission?
Yes. And at the last meeting, I know we saw the letter about increasing the number of natives, that apparently what went through has been approved by planning and zoning. And this time, there's no intent to change, you know, the current mix of plants.
And the beautification committee did approve the planting, correct?
Yes.
Can you forget?
Mr. Velleber?
Just a quick question. I know, I saw something on, someone posted on Facebook. I didn't see an answer, but I'm sure it's probably there somewhere. But I thought I'd ask you. At the Norton School, there was some concern about the continued use of the back, you know, the rear entrance way there and whether that was, what's the, you know, what's the plan for that and how do they?
I saw that Facebook post, and there really was no plan to stop using Sharon Drive. And my understanding is that's going to-
Continue.
-continue throughout the process.
Okay. Thank you. I just, I saw that post. I didn't see a real discussion on it. And I decided to ask you with that and see when- that and see when and if that was... Because my thought was that that's part of the whole construction process throughout until it's... Until the school's ready.
Right, yeah, there was no... Nothing in our plan to change the entrance.
And then, was, just if I could... I can't remember. What is the plan for that road during school... Once the school's open and running? Is that a bus entrance way, exit way? Is it gonna be used?
I believe... I'm not positive, but I believe it is gonna be a bus entrance way.
Okay.
Can I comment on that?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Greg.
Just if you would, yeah, just grab a mic, though, Vin, so we can get your answer.
I know there's a ton of detail, so it's hard to remember this, but when the new school is fully open, that's just going to be an emergency egress if it's needed, and it's a walking path, so students, you know, families can walk from Sharon Drive along that roadway. It'll be constructed in such a way that it's a walking path. So, all traffic, parent traffic, bus traffic, will come on North Brooksville, you know, in and out. Same, a better loop system. There'll be two lanes in, two lanes out, a parent loop and a separate bus loop, but all traffic will be on Route 42.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, thanks.
Mr. Jinks.
Thanks, Greg. Just a quick comment. I wanted to just kind of pass along my appreciation for the fact that you guys continue to post videos of the progress of the building. It seems like you're... Somebody's out there constantly taking video and posting it, so that's really helpful and great to see. And I'm forgetting what the name of the Facebook site is that you guys are doing that, unfortunately, right now, but it'd be great if, I guess, more people were aware of that.
Yeah, I think it is Next Generation School Building Committee. I think that's the name of the Facebook site.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Mr. Rosenblatt, thank you. Any other comments from colleagues? Seeing none, again, pass along our thanks, and, yes, you... As long as you and Mr. Gussenberg show up and open your comments by saying both schools are under budget, you are welcome back to every meeting.
Okay, thank you.
All right, which brings us to new business. Item A is the authorization to draft commitment letter and self-assessment for the Town of Cheshire to participate in the Charging Smart Program. Ms. Pearson.
Be it resolved that the Town Council approves Resolution Number 070825-2, be it resolved that the Town Council authorizes the Town of Cheshire's participation in the Charging Smart Program, and be it further resolved that the Town Council authorizes the drafting of a commitment letter, self-assessment, and any additional documents required for participation in said program.
Thank you, Ms. Pearson. Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Ms. Pearson, back to you for discussion.
Yeah, so Jeremy Shulik is here tonight, so thank you for joining us. Jeremy presented information about the Charging Smart Program to the Energy Commission first, back, I believe, beginning of... Or end of May, beginning of June, thereabouts, and at that time, referred it to the Sustainability Committee. So, he then came back and presented it to the Sustainability Committee, so Don Walsh and I were in attendance in that meeting, as well as Andrew Martelli, our Assistant Town Manager. And the Energy Commission, in their next meeting, which I was not able to attend, did issue a recommendation, and that is also in the file here, that the Town of Cheshire enroll in the Charging Smart Program. There are no requirements of us, except for a brief self-assessment to begin with, but basically, what this will do will encourage us to look at proactively the infrastructure for EV vehicles and municipal... Potentially municipal EV fleets in the future. And again, it does not commit us to doing anything, but it allows us to assess our current infrastructure, which is basically not much at all in our community at this moment in time. And much of what, if you were to look at online, there is just a Charging Smart Program guideline. It's long, so we don't have copies of it, but basically, there are some action items that we can partake in. A lot of it would actually involve potentially P and Z and looking at zoning. So, for example, we have this new north-end development, and although the developer is looking to put in either electronic readiness, as Dan Knudsen recommended, you know, as we're building in our community, at least ensuring that our developers are preparing for the potentiality of EV chargers in those developments, or providing the actual EV chargers themselves. And so, if we enroll in this program, Jeremy's organization, the Clean Transportation Communities of Southern Connecticut, would be here to advise us as we desire in regards to what is available at the state level, at the federal level, in regards to resources to ensure that we are proactively addressing these issues. Andrew, is there anything you might like to add to what I shared?
I guess what I would add is it's not a huge lift for the town in order to include some of the parameters of the program into the various documents, and I do know that our town planner is currently going through, working on our zoning regulations. So, it just would ask for a certain number of potential ready areas for charging stations, and I know that in our Stonebridge Commons Development, where there's the new apartment units that are going in, there are EV charging stations there, based on total parking lot counts, as well as Lakeside at Cheshire. So, we're already moving forward in the direction, so I don't see it being a big cost or big change to our existing zoning regs. The one thing that I pointed out is that some of these units, which I know that our consultant was looking at, do have the desire to put... To wrap them in advertisements, and I know that that would be against our current zoning regulations, and so that would be something that planners, I think, would have to look at, to see if we'd want to have these big behemoths covered in, you know, M and M wraps, just for sake of discussion, you know, in our parking lots, when we have a three-color rule on all of our signage currently, so...
Yeah, and something that we discussed on the Energy Commission was the potentiality of fast EV chargers in some of our municipal spaces, and so, for example, some of our parks, Mixville Park or Bartlam Park, fast charging stations that the municipality provides, they would be for pay, so individuals would have to pay to access the electricity, but it would be providing a resource for people in our community who own EVs, and most people will charge at home, but sometimes you need a fast charge, and so it would provide a public opportunity, and it would serve as a point of attraction to those parks as well, providing that municipal resource. We know already, we have limited parking at our library and our town hall and many of our other public buildings, but we could identify potentially, and Jeremy's organization could help us to identify potential grants that might benefit us in terms of applying for some of those resources. And so, I just open for any questions, and then Jeremy's here to answer any specific questions, if folks have questions.
Mr. Velleber.
So, I appreciate this idea. My question is, so, I just want to make sure that, you know, and I know, I think we've heard this, but I figured I'd say it again. There's no obligation, there's no cost obligation to the town at this point, nor... And if we enter into this program, there's no, you know, expenditures of funds that we have to do to stay... Become part of the program, nor, you know, to try to bring this program to fruition. It's just really an overview of how the town, if we choose to go forward, can best improve that accessibility to electricity and chargers? Is that the concept?
Yes, that's correct. There's no financial commitment at all at the bronze level, which is all that you'd be... I mean, I even hesitate to use the word commitment. It's really more like a letter of intent. You'd be signing that you intend to pursue this designation. There's no penalty to withdraw at any time if you see fit to, for any reason. And at the bronze level, it's really just a cursory review of what your current practices are with zoning and with permitting, and then the only other real requirement is to have a meeting with the utility representative and discuss various topics related to EV charging. I mean, the one resource, I suppose, that you could say that the town would want to provide is just a bit of staff time, which Andrew seemed to be willing to commit, and that, again, at the bronze level, should be a pretty light lift. I mean, our, the Interstate Renewable Energy Council, which created this program, they estimate... I mean, it depends very much on, from town to town, depending on the particulars, how much you've already done, how much you're already aware of in terms of your own policies, but they estimate it's about, like, a few hours a week for a couple months.
Okay, so we're not... So, I just want to make sure, clear that we're, as a town, are not obligated for an expenditure or to put these in, you know, on town facilities unless we choose to do so.
Correct, yeah.
And for private, for private property owners, does this program help... How does that help them or guide them? Is that to get the town to try to get better zoning regulations and other regulations to try to facilitate or provide for ways for, you know, developers to put that into their projects? Is that the issue?
For private property owners?
Yeah.
I mean, the first thing that comes to mind there is what Danny mentioned up there, and this is not a requirement at the bronze level. This would be more actually like a gold-level requirement, so this would be entirely optional, but there is a state statute, actually, that was passed in 2022 that requires all buildings of 30 parking spaces or more, or any new construction that has 30 parking spaces or more, to have 10% of those parking spaces outfitted with electric vehicle charging infrastructure, not necessarily charging stations, but conduit, panel capacity, the infrastructure that would make it future-proofed, so to speak. So, that's actually a state statute, and as far as I know, not that many municipalities are actually following that yet. It would require municipal ordinance in order to enforce it, and that's something I would highly recommend doing, but it's not a requirement of the program.
Okay, thank you. Because I wasn't... What you were saying, I wouldn't think... I don't think Cheshire's doing that yet. I don't know if anyone knows that. I don't know that that's actually currently, you know, that that's currently being done.
Yeah, I don't think that many municipalities actually are. I'm working on ordinance now for the city of New Haven. They're very interested in passing something even more ambitious than the state statute on that front, but, yeah, I mean, to sum up, it's just, it's a free technical assistance program and a certification program, and it's free because it's federally funded, essentially.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Walsh.
First of all, thank you for coming tonight, and you gave a very thorough presentation at the Sustainability Committee, so I appreciate it. Not having an EV, I learned a lot about fast charging and slow charging and this and that. Do have a question going down the road when we, you know, whether we install them at municipal buildings versus, you know, the private buildings. Are there, like, companies that will come out, install them, and they... Obviously, it's a profit, they make a profit, or is it kind of like solar panels? You can buy them, or you can lease them over 20 years, and, you know, if you buy them, you get more bang for your buck upfront. Is that... How do those work? Because I'm just curious, because if we're gonna have to start looking into the municipal level, we're in the middle of doing our capital budget, we might need to put it in the five-year plan somewhere down the road, so... And I'm not sure if we are the ones putting out the money, or is a company gonna come in and put them in for us and let them take the profit, and we just give them space?
Yeah, that's a really good question. It gets pretty complicated. There are a lot of different ownership models out there. There's, you know, more conventional models where the, you know, the town would pay for the chargers and then receive the revenue from the charging themselves in order to pay themselves back. Then there's so-called charging as a service, where the provider retains ownership of the chargers, they pay themselves back for installing the chargers.
They take care of them.
Yeah, and then, right, they provide the maintenance as well, but then, yeah, the town doesn't gain revenue for... But then there's also, like, revenue share programs, where you kind of go half and half or, you know, reach some other deal. I haven't... I haven't been pretty to, like, too many different arrangements like that, but I do know that there are a lot of different models out there that an EV charging installer would be able to, you know, we know a lot of installers, and we'd be able to refer you to a lot of different people, so you could get multiple quotes and multiple setups with that.
Yeah, I think, just as on the town level, we probably need to know whether this is something we're gonna be investing money in, or we're gonna have a company come in and let them handle it for us.
Right.
I think that's something we'll have to discuss.
Yeah, there are pros and cons to both approaches.
Yep, thank you.
Mr. Mailone.
Thank you. Thanks for taking initiative on this, and Jeremy, thanks for being here. I think this is... Sounds like a great program. So, you're federally funded, your organization?
Yes, for the most part. We have some state grants as well, and, yeah, but for the most part, federally funded by the Department of Energy.
So, you're national, but you have... This is a Connecticut organization, Connecticut representation of it? Is that how you work?
Yeah, sorry, I should explain more. So, our organization is called Clean Transportation Communities of Southern Connecticut. We are a so-called Clean Cities and Communities organization. We're officially designated by the Federal Department of Energy to serve the counties of New Haven, Middlesex, and New London here in Connecticut to facilitate clean transportation projects. I like to think of ourselves as sort of like free consultants that are funded by the federal government, so we're not technically federal employees, we're an independent nonprofit, but that's most of where our funding comes from, and we work at the local level, very much so, even though we're federally funded. And there's 75 or 80 such similar coalitions, just like ours, throughout the country that serve most major metropolitan areas of the country. There are three coalitions like ours in Connecticut. We serve New Haven, Middlesex, and New London. Like I said, there's Clean Transportation Coalition Western Connecticut that serves Fairfield and Litchfield, then there's the Capital Clean Cities of Connecticut that serves Hartford and Tolland and Wyndham Counties. So, yeah, we're locally based, but federally funded for the most part, so...
Okay, but nothing's free, so you're funded by our tax dollars, not by private entities that are funding you, is what I understand. It's strictly a public entity?
Yeah, well, we're an independent nonprofit, so we're publicly funded for the most part. Yeah, I mean, well, currently, I think, yeah, it's... All of our funding is from federal and state dollars. It's possible we might seek out private funding at some point in the future, but...
And if you're dealing with EV charging installations, you don't propose any, you don't... You're not developing any, you're just representing standards and criteria, et cetera?
Right, yeah, we're not installers ourselves.
The private market in that area is what we... Is available to us then?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. We're not installers ourselves.
So, what was Andrew talking about, worrying about signs on these things? Because I've never seen EV charging stations with signs on them. Is that something that's unique to your organization, or is that something we need to worry about? Because it surprised me, that's all.
The advertising screens?
Yeah.
There are some chargers now that make some of their revenue back...
From advertising?
From advertising, yeah.
So, we can control that with our own zoning?
Right, yep.
Okay, I think it's wonderful. I, you know, I think the market drives this. I've been involved in a lot of housing, and we put them in. Some towns, like Hampton, requires it, probably at or above the state standards. Many towns do require it, not all, you're right. The market drives it. You won't sell or rent housing units if people can't charge their vehicles, and people are driving vehicles like that, so it's... It just all makes sense, so I think it's wonderful. The only thing I suggest is we move quickly if we're... To get you connected to our planning department, because if we're working on the planned development, now's the time to incorporate your recommendations and your guidance, so let's move it along so make sure that it's not... Doesn't stop here, and you're, you know, you're kind of working in a vacuum. We need you to collaborate with our planning staff so that something of, you know, something real comes out of this, so, thank you.
That sounds great, thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Allard.
I don't have a question. I just wanted to say thank you for bringing this to our town. I think it's really a great idea, and I support future-proofing our town towards clean energy.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Look forward to working with you.
Item B is the authorization to engage council to participate in the insulin pricing litigation. Ms. Kramer?
Ms. Kramer?
Be it resolved that the town council approves Resolution Number 070825-3, be it resolved that the town council authorizes the engagement of counsel for the town of Cheshire's participation in the insulin pricing scheme litigation as presented.
We have a motion, a second from Mr. Walsh. Thank you both. Mr. Kimball, by way of kicking off discussion?
Sure. Earlier this year, we were, my office was contacted by Attorney Ken Bartlett. He is, represents a firm amongst a collection of firms that are, are doing what's called a multi-district effort to investigate and pursue litigation over alleged insulin overpricing schemes, and that these may have had significant costs for the town and Board of Ed because we are a self-funded insurance program. So as of May, a number of municipalities across the country have signed on to participate. This is a no-cost contingency-only type, sort of like a class action-type lawsuit. As I said, in the submittal, the towns of Merritt and Bristol, Middletown, Norwich, Farmington, Windsor, South Windsor, Weathersfield, Torrington, Fairfield, Suddington, Hartford, and West Hartford, among a number of others, have already signed on. And so we reviewed this. I had Jamie review this with Attorney DiNoffrio and just kind of confirm that we're interested. And so we are recommending it for participation. It's kind of all upside for us if we're successful, and really no cost at risk here. So we would seek your approval this evening.
Questions? Ms. Ellard?
So after reading the material, it's my understanding that, that essentially the claims that the town has paid out will be investigated to see if, if we were overcharged for insulin. Is that correct? If we overpaid for those claims erroneously, and there'll be a certain level of reimbursement minus.
Right. The, the multi-district litigation involves claims that certain companies, manufacturers, and PBMs engaged in price inflation, illegal price inflation. So in the event that it's determined that there was overcharging, then there'd be some type of, ordinarily, some type of settlement gets reached, and the town gets a proportionate share of whatever they determine the price should have been versus what the town was charged.
Is it proportionate to the claims that we paid versus other towns that are participating in this, or like an equal share to?
No, it's, it's, it's not a class action. It's multi-district, but usually you consolidate all the multi-district litigation. And so if there's a settlement, the manufacturer, the PBM, doesn't want to be paying, you know, 60 cents on the dollar in one case and 70 in another. So ordinarily, it's just some kind of across-the-board determination that, you know, we deny all the allegations that you were overcharged, and we understand you claim you overcharged $600,000 over 10 years, but we'll pay you $400,000, something like that.
Either way, this comes at no cost to us and potentially.
Right. No fees, no expenses.
Those accountable for overcharging us?
Correct.
I'm in support.
Yeah, we first made the determination about whether or not there was a significant amount of money paid to these particular manufacturers and PBMs, both at the town and Board of Ed level, and for Cheshire standards, not for the multi-district litigation. They look at this as a small case, but they're still willing to do it. But for Cheshire, it's a lot of money.
Mr. Walsh?
Just have a quick question for Jeff. So, you know, this seems like the first of what could be many of these types of suits, because I'm sure there's many drugs that are being overpriced for many years or certain years. Is, is, is this like unusual to see this happen? Or, I mean, I don't remember, I know that we, the opioids thing is completely different, but this is like an actual drug that people, because, you know, when we looked at the drugs that we are self-insuring out there, I mean, there's a couple that are extremely high, and they've been high for several years. So you wonder how much longer before those have lawsuits.
Yeah, I mean, ordinarily, you see a couple, when it comes to pharmaceuticals, it's not new. You see a couple of tranches of litigation. It could be, you know, the United States government brings suit against all the manufacturers, and then there's some claim process for municipal, but ordinarily, they're doing it for private sector. And then, and then there's some type of distribution to people that submit a claim. This is a little bit, it's, it's kind of structured the same way as the opioid litigation, although as you indicated, it's a completely different kettle of fish in terms of the types of claims. But the, the idea is that instead of being part of a class, or instead of being dependent upon the state or the federal government, the town and the Board of Ed are the plaintiff in the lawsuit. Yeah. But should you expect more? Probably. You know, usually the way that plaintiffs' class action and tort, toxic tort lawyers go, it's, you know, whatever the claim de jour is. PFAS is pretty hot right now against water utilities, but so far, there haven't been any big paydays. And of course, tobacco was big in the 90s, so there's always something that keeps the plaintiff's lawyers' firms busy.
Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item C, Mr. Maciana, the discussion of the Energy Performance Contract 2.0 projects. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm here this evening with Anthony Marchiano, no relation to Vincent Maciana, but close. Anthony Marchiano is from Johnson Controls. On the, on tonight's agenda, it does say that there will be possible action. I just want to let the council members know, there's no request for action tonight. This is an update and really giving you a heads up about what's coming in August. So the agenda is, the agenda item is supported and being advanced by the Energy Performance Contract 2.0 Working Group, which I'm sure the council members know that Fiona Pearson is a member, and Mr. White from the Board of Ed is one of the members of that particular working group. Just a quick refresh on the background of this project. The town council previously appointed Energia as our owner's rep to begin the pursuit of a second energy performance contract for the town and the schools based on the RFP that was issued. The town council awarded on May 13th at their meeting Johnson Controls to take this project forward to the next step, which is an investment-grade audit. And ultimately, we hope to enter into an energy performance contract to make infrastructure improvements to the school and town building. So since that appointment, just under two, two months ago, you know, we, the working group, and internal employees have been working with Johnson Controls. And Anthony is here tonight to present a specific topic, and that is to try and fast-track a portion of the proposed projects before federal and local incentives expire. And there are substantial funds that if we can act quickly enough, we can still qualify for those federal and local incentives, and that will enable us to do more of the infrastructure work that will be recommended ultimately under an energy performance contract. So tonight, all we're looking is to provide an update to the council, just try and gain some consensus, answer some questions, and then prepare you that the goal is to come back on August 12th with all the details you need, including what those incentives would be, how they, you know, this would be a subset of a full energy performance contract that would have all the guarantees. And so with that, I am going to ask Anthony Marchiano again to make a presentation, and we'll answer questions as we go along or after we're complete. It's relatively short, but hopefully gives you the information you need. Anthony?
Great introduction. Thank you. Good evening, Town Council, Town Manager, Mr. DiNoffrio. Agenda today, we're gonna walk through what the scope of the project is that we're looking to fast-track, what we call the Energy Conservation Matrix, an update on that, touch on the federal and local programs that I mentioned have some expirations that we're looking to obtain, talk through some order-of-magnitude indicative renewable savings, revenue, the cost benefits, review the timeline, and obviously answer any questions that the town council may have here today. So out of the gate, we focused on four major items with regards to scope and the potential impact of loss of incentives, grants. Fuel cells at two locations, the high school and the water treatment plant, and photoelectric generation at four of the schools via roof, one of the schools, the high school, via ground mount system, and then a proposed carport solution at the Highland Elementary School. And we've got additional detail on each of those scopes as we walk through the presentation. But first and foremost, we wanted to talk about some of the changes in the incentives, both federally and locally. So the first key point here is the big beautiful bill that was passed at the federal level last week, signed into law on the 4th. What that provides is impact to the solar investment tax credit that the town would be eligible for. A solar facility will need to either start construction within 12 months of the law being enacted, or placed into service prior to January 1st, 2028, so effectively 30 months from today. I realize that sounds like a decent amount of time, but between a lot of the utility coordination and various different components, believe me, that time goes very fast. One item to be extremely cognizant of that we're obtaining additional information in, on, is the treatment of any foreign entity of concern materials. Specifically, most solar panels are made in Asian countries. There are a number of domestic panels that are available. But again, with the modification in the law here most recently, the anticipation is that the cost of the domestic panels will increase significantly. And to be able to have construction begun within the calendar year of 2025 would be in the best interest of the town in keeping the prices and the cost of the systems in line with what makes financial sense and reasonable sense to move forward. So that's federally. There's still a lot of movement going on at the federal level, but indicatively, that's where we're landing as we sit today. What it means is we need to be able to move fast with the solar scope and starting construction. Now, starting construction has a specific definition associated with how it's handled. But again, it's in the interest of the town to, to move quickly to keep this as a potential possibility to obtain those funds, even with some of the modifications that we continue to handle and see over the ongoing days into weeks. Locally, state bill for declassified fuel cells as a Class 1 renewable effective October 1st. What that means is that the fuel cell no longer has the ability to virtually net meter power. For those that aren't aware, virtually net metering means you can produce power at one location and distribute it virtually through the grid to various different other locations, and basically aggregate your town usage and school usage into a single entity, as opposed to using that power specifically at the site where it's produced. Why that's important for a fuel cell is fuel cells create a lot of power. They have a very specific power density. So you think of a solar field where there's panels across the entire field, produces a good amount of electricity, but takes up a lot of room. A fuel cell uses a chemical process in a small footprint to create a significant amount of power in that smaller dense area. The intent and the benefit from Johnson Controls, as we presented our project, was to install a fuel cell at the water treatment plant. What that provides is a zero-cost gas line to the water treatment facility and allows that power to be, that's being produced from that gas line, to be used at various facilities across the entirety of the town. So it provides a win for the water treatment site in getting gas and being able to upgrade that facility, but also offsets and stabilizes power for the time of the 20 years of estimated operation of that asset.
Can you repeat that?
Yes.
Sorry. Repeat that.
Yep. So the part about the gas line, or the part, okay. So, let's see, the second bullet point under benefits, the fuel cell at the water treatment pollution control plant will deliver natural gas to the site at zero utility upgrade cost. I believe that with a traditional line where there's not a year-round load, as there would be with the fuel cell, that the utility is quoted as significantly, I want to say, six-figure number to bring gas specifically to that site. Because a fuel cell provides a year-round load for the gas utility, it's in their best interest to provide that line at no cost to the town because of the ongoing usage of gas and the stabilization that it provides seasonally for that utility. Obviously, once that's onsite producing power, there is a significant heat load that is required at the water treatment site as well. So using some of the off, sorry, offput gas, offput exhaust, in order to provide a heat source at that site, would obviously be a benefit to that site as well. Generally speaking, Johnson Controls designed this project to be budget-neutral, meaning the savings that it provides and the revenues that it provide make up for the costs of the actual upfront installation comprehensively, and in fact includes an additional $6 million of potential upgrades to be defined via various other boiler replacements, air handling units, lighting, what have you, right? Infrastructure upgrades to be determined. But the key is to obtain the incentives that we talked about before in order to realize that full $6 million benefit. Both solar and fuel cells provide stability and electric power, because you are now producing and having the monetary credit at your sites, as opposed to relying on an escalating 2%, 3%, 4% utility cost year over year. And so you're fixing your utility costs by producing your own power effectively through both solar and through fuel cells. And then lastly, we have the ability to modify based off of any modifications that may occur with changing federal regulation, acceptance into programs, and kind of morph the project as certain things unfold. But holistically, what we're looking to do is to move quickly to take advantage, take potential advantage of the, both the federal and the state of Connecticut local, local So a little bit more detail on the different scope. So we talked about the fuel cell at the water treatment site, 650 KW in size, estimated 5.4 million kilowatt-hours. That would provide a monetary kilowatt benefit savings of over half a million dollars comprehensively just from the production to the town. Similarly, the high school, elementary school, and some of the other solar systems are roughly 3, 3,000 kilowatts or 3 megawatts in size, would provide another 4 million kilowatt-hours of revenue to the district through the school NRES program, Non-Renewable Energy Solutions Program. What that provides is currently there's an open first-come, first-served enrollment at the, within that program, which has 20 megawatts of capability. It closes with the August RFP submission. So again, when we talk about the timing of being able to move quick and provide certainty around the revenue that the solar can provide, that's another reason that we're specifically targeting and looking at these renewables as we sit today and asking to move quickly with this portion of the project. All-in comprehensively, we're at about $1.35 million of savings and revenue that could be provided via these four specific scope items. That same number carries over here into this next slide into column A, total savings and revenue. At this point, we're still working through some additional design due diligence, but have an order-of-magnitude measure cost at just over $22 million total, all-in. We're estimating a state aid reimbursement on the solar, going up to the state and obtaining the portion at 50%, which Cheshire is entitled to, which rolls up to about $6.5 million. The estimated IRA benefit, which again, we're gonna need to work quickly on within this calendar year, is another close to $5.8 million of benefit, making the net cost 22 minus the seven and a half minus the 5.8 at $9 million roughly of cost. $9 million into $1.3 million a year in savings, provides a simple payback, just rough math, right? Do $9 million divided by 1.35 of about six and a half years. Now, what does that mean from an ROI standpoint? Well, it's, it's double-digit ROI, if you're looking at it that way. What it also provides is the ability to package that $6 million worth of additional work and bundle it with some of these faster payback renewable items, taking advantage of the credits, and being able to, without going to the, the public for an increase in taxes, provide $6 million worth of work in your buildings, and having the solar and the fuel cells pay for that under the additional savings that they would produce over a 10, 15, 20-year term of operation. term of operation. We talked a little bit about timeline. Effectively, we're obviously at the town council presentation, which is the third item, the first one on the bottom. We've got another roughly two weeks to finalize the scope and the savings associated with doing all of the due diligence details. We've been onsite now for a few weeks, have been evaluating structural within the school buildings in order to ensure that the solar is adequate at the various buildings, looking at the utility and submitting utility interconnections, as well as looking at existing electrical infrastructure. The intent would be to finalize the scope and savings towards the end of July, provide that to Energia, who would provide a third-party independent assessment to ensure that Johnson Controls is satisfactory with the engineering work that we have done to date. Assuming we get through that review with Energia, within that final week of July, we would be able to finalize a contract specifically for these scope measures to present to the town council on the 12th of August for approval in order to continue to move and meet the deadlines we need to in order to spin off that $6 million of supplemental cash that can be invested via future scope to be determined. Supplementally, after contract, we would need to continue to apply for a couple of the programmatic items, the NRES program, as well as get construction started, again, within the calendar year of 2025 on this specific scope to ensure that we have the proper classification to receive that federal funding, as well as comply with the fuel cell requirement, which would allow us to virtually net meter through the Connecticut NRES program in this last tranche. In short, that's what we're looking to share today. Obviously, it's very aggressive. Without some of the changes and modifications in some of the programs, this would be a little bit more of a lengthy process. But again, Johnson Controls in working closely with the team is trying to maximize the value and the benefit that the town of Cheshire gets through this program, and that means doing things a little bit more segmented, at least as part of this process. Any questions?
Thank you very much. I appreciate your presentation tonight, and thank you, Vinnie. This is, it's certainly a lot, and I know that you're looking to fast-track this because of some of the things happening in DC. I'm going to hold questions from colleagues tonight, and what I'd like to do is try to piggyback this off of a capital budget meeting that we're going to have once we have a post 25th, maybe 23rd or 25th of July where we have, nope, I'm sorry, it's the 23rd, yes, the finalizing the scope and savings. I'd like to have the opportunity for town staff to be able to digest this and give some recommendations to the council. If you are available to piggyback off of that meeting and can be available for questions, I'd like to do that at that time. And that would still give us some time prior to our August 12th council meeting where we'd still have another opportunity at a bite of the apple, so to speak, before giving you a thumbs up or thumbs down, so.
Yeah, absolutely. I think if we can continue to meet ultimately contract approval and notice to proceed for construction as part of this timeline, we can be flexible with some of the kind of inner workings to get to that point. But again, knowing and targeting that we need to have construction started this calendar year, we wanted to leave enough runway from September onward in order to ensure that we met the requirements and didn't put the project to some degree in jeopardy by missing deadlines.
Excellent. Yeah, Mr. Malone.
I know you don't want any questions, so, but I would like, this is complex, and there are a lot of council members who have been involved in it for a while, and they've had the opportunity to understand that at that level. I have not, and it's a significant, is significant kind of investment. I would at minimum like to see details on the specific applications at each site sooner than later, because if we're looking at physical improvements to these sites, I know our planning department will want to weigh in on it, maybe they'll need zoning approval. If we're talking about clearing substantial vegetation to put in solar, I have fundamentally personal problems with that, but I might be okay with it if I see the plan. And so I have a bunch of questions, which I prefer not to wait too late to ask, so, and I'd like ample time to ask them and get responses to them. So I just respectfully ask that we get more information and have enough time to ask questions and get responses before we're asked to vote on this, because it is important.
I absolutely agree. But I think seeing this for the first time tonight, I don't think we're in a position to, in other words, we're not far enough down the road, and staff isn't far enough down the road, and I'd like to rely on staff members who are the, our subject matter experts to get us that information.
I just have one question as well, because a lot of it has to do with the schools as well. So how does that fall into, is this going to be a capital budget issue, and is it education budget versus town budget? Because should the Board of Ed be brought in on these meetings with us? I'm not exactly sure to what extent we need to do that, so.
I will tell you that the first one was done, and Vinnie can keep me honest on that, is that the first one was done. It encompassed not only school but town projects as well, but it's done, the capital investment is done by the town.
Not to get too deep into the weeds, but generally speaking, there won't be any capital outlay.
Yeah.
It's going to be, it's a tax-exempt lease that we would enter into in which the energy savings goes to pay the lease over, if the project is 20 years, we'll use that as an example, that's where the cash flow would be sufficient to pay for that lease. And I understand that there's a lot of detail. It's not even finalized yet. The one thing that we know is that there's a lot of money that would be lost if we could take advantage of these incentives and didn't. That's not to put pressure on everybody. I think we're all feeling the pressure of, we wish we had a full year to be able to take advantage. And it's not just the federal incentive, it's that local incentive for the fuel cells that's expiring, you know, which that one would be, you know, pretty disappointing to lose. It doesn't mean that we still wouldn't have a, an energy performance contract without this phase of work. It just means that we could do less infrastructure work. So if we can grab $5 million more of incentives while it's available, that's the goal here.
Is there any, like, Barnum isn't?
The only reason is that this is very preliminary information. We've talked about, you know, Barnum and the new Norton having solar installations. I'm assuming the council remembers that both those schools were designed so that we could accommodate solar panels on the roofs. We just didn't have the funding and the budget when we were working early on and designed to do that. This timing is going to become a factor, whether or not we could squeeze Barnum and Norton because of those deadlines, but that is a discussion item. So again, those measures may change by the time we get back in front of you, you know, sometime in July with, you know, least initial information so everyone can start digesting. And I will add that, you know, we, you know, have been working with Jeff, we met earlier, Jeff DiNofrio, you know, took a look at an initial draft of the contract, so there are some, there's, you know, a lot of different pieces of legwork going on in the background. And the most important thing that I want you to understand is, if we do agree to a contract, the terms of that contract would be that the energy savings is guaranteed by Johnson Controls, just like the broader contract would be. So this is not, even though we're bifurcating it, the same conditions hold, that the energy savings has to be sufficient to pay back the lease, and Johnson Controls is providing that guarantee, right?
And I'll be around for a few more years. To answer your question a little bit more detailed, Mr. Malone, we have structural analysis that's coming back next week. I would love to be able to share locations of where the various different panels are going as part of the solar sites. That's still a work in progress as we continue to obtain the information. We do have some preliminary schematic drawings of fuel cell development for the two sites where we're evaluating that. That's included as part of this presentation. We just don't have the final solar locations and didn't want to share it until we have that finalized later next week.
And just for clarification, I'm not as concerned about rooftop solar because no one's going to see it. I'm concerned about those elements that would impact, you know, if we're putting on roof structures in front of schools, at the entrance to schools, you know, typically that would be something that would go through significant scrutiny at planning and zoning. Anything that you're building on the ground would be, if we're, again, if we're removing vegetation to put in solar, I'd be interested to see the extent of vegetation removal, just so we get a handle. I know that's not necessarily our purview, but I, as a person, on a personal level, I'll be concerned about those elements of the, of the program just as much as, as, as the, as the financial elements and the energy elements.
And that's perfectly sensible, and I think as we get to a point where we have more definition around the scope, those are certainly conversations we can have with whatever parties we need to with the zoning level, at the school level.
And I know we're not supposed to ask questions, but I'll ask one more. Are we going to be able to get these panels? Because you're saying that there's going to be surcharges for panels coming from overseas, and there's going to be a demand on local panels. I mean, is it possible we can do all this and not, and not get solar panels and not, not be able to install them? Is that a possibility?
Listen, at this point, I think everything's a possibility, just based off of what we've seen over the last two weeks. Let's just say we've got a lot of different work and different projects where this is impacting some of the other projects that we're holistically working on as well that are in a similar situation. So we've got a lot of time, effort, money, and various different individuals and corporations beyond Johnson Controls that are working on that and, let's say, reserving what we need to in order to make these things a reality.
No, it's, it's, it's all good. I just, you know, without, without having things, you know, to the point of being finalized, I don't want to have a question get answered tonight that may change subsequently, and we're under an impression, because this is a really condensed timeframe, so.
It's easy to tell.
Yeah, I agree with you.
I have a preliminary question.
Ms. Kramer.
I'm going to digest this over the next few days, obviously, but a very, really preliminary question, which everybody might know, I have no idea. The initial cost of construction, is that something that the town, is that a capital budget bonding program that we put up money and have to borrow?
Now, that's what Vinnie said. Go ahead, Finn.
I can answer it.
Say it again.
Yeah, so effectively, because it's a project where the savings are realized over a period of time, the ability to utilize a tax-exempt municipal lease, where those savings pay for the investment over time, would require no increase in the bonding ability or the need from the town.
Who pays for the initial construction?
So, yeah, Johnson Controls.
Okay. Thank you.
Does the initial construction, and then the operational savings over time that you realize pay back the loan.
Yeah, since we're, since the meaning of not asking any questions means asking questions, I had, I had to ask a question. Just, this should be pretty straightforward, but if we go ahead with, you know, kind of fast-tracking this, and we get all the incentives that you're describing here, is this the, does this encompass all the incentives that we'd hoped to achieve in this program, or are we going to be missing out on, how much could we be missing out if we, you know, having to fast-track this, and we don't have the sort of longer runway we normally have?
Yes, so specifically for these scope items, this is pretty much all of the incentives that are available at this point in time. Now, I can't talk to other programs that may be rolling out in '26, '27, or even three years from now, when there may be new federal administration and things change again. But at this point in time, this is all that's available for this specific scope of work. Now, just jumping back to the energy conservation metrics, there's a lot of other scope that's looking to be done here as part of this project. Let's use a boiler replacement, for example, which would qualify for utility incentives, as well as some other state-based incentives as well, along with window replacement, which would qualify for state-based incentives. So for this specific scope, this is it, but there's a lot more incentives and grants that are available for the supplemental scope that we would look to include as part of, let's call it the second phase, once we got this off the ground and saw the certainty around that $6 million benefit.
But the second phase is not going to be available anymore, or it still is, would be available?
It would be as of today.
As of today, right, okay, all right.
The amount of due diligence that would be required to design various different aspects, we're trying to focus our energy on these big hit, our items right now where the funding's going away. But our anticipation is that there is going to be funding available for those supplemental measures similar to today.
Okay. I think Fiona has one more non-question.
Just a comment. I just wanted to thank Vin and thank Tim White, I know, for proactively reaching out very early on, even before the bill was passed, right, saying, we need to start talking about this, we need to start thinking about this, and reaching out to you and for you so proactively beginning to put things together. I didn't think it was going to be as bad as it was, and it was worse, right? I know, I remember emailing Tim and saying, oh, the Senate won't be quite as bad, and then it was. So taking advantage of what we've got quickly, I just want, again, appreciate you acting so quickly and beginning to put something together for us to consider.
And with that, thank you again, I appreciate it. And we will, we will see you again. Mr. White, yes. Ever so briefly, Mr. White, but yes.
Do you need the screen anymore?
No. Okay. Just name and address for the record, please.
Tim White, 11 Colonial Court. Also happen to be a member of the Board of Ed. Just a couple of quick points. First of all, thank you for being open-minded and considering this as it moves forward. I think that there is real potential here to get some value out of it. A couple other points. If you decide to move forward with a fuel cell at the, at the wastewater treatment plant, another thing to keep in mind would be that people are concerned about affordability, particularly in relation to energy. So some people, as roads get repaved, that are spurs off of Cheshire Street, you could consider keeping in touch with Yankee Gas and running gas lines down the spurs or the roads as well. Another point that didn't get mentioned, I don't know if the town manager happens to know this, the gas lines, if they collect property taxes, are they in the grant list? I don't know. I seem to recall that they were, but I'm not sure. Yeah, Jim didn't know either. Anyway, just a point to consider. So we potentially get funding by extending the gas line for, you just mentioned the pilot. Oh, all right, end of it. Thank you.
Yeah, and I guess, I think the, my last point is, in terms of the construction, I didn't hear it. I don't recall you mentioning it, other than saying it's nuanced, but am I correct in saying that beginning construction and getting the incentives is not dependent on actually, like, shovels in the ground? And the reason I say it is because, and I don't, if it's a complicated answer, the point is that, like, Barnum is not going to be done. If we did rooftop solar, Barnum wouldn't be done until July next year, so that's way past that. So could we thread that needle simply in terms of meeting the requirements for Barnum? Oh, sure. Because my understanding is that we could, just for people who are watching at home and thinking it's crazy.
So I know you said, don't answer if it's a complicated question. It is complicated, right? So Johnson Controls is not a tax consultant, we're not a municipal advisor, but solely, you know, going based off of our understanding of the program and working with individuals, what we've been led to believe is that there's two ways for a project to officially have been deemed starting construction. One is physical work onsite in relation to the renewable energy asset, meaning racking, meaning holes in the ground, so physical work in construction. Number two option would be safe harboring or purchasing 5% of the material being used, well, minimum 5%, in order to qualify and have that material onsite delivered within a specific period of time during this calendar year. And so it doesn't necessarily need to be shovels in the ground. There is a secondary path, but again, that's only what I've been told, and it would, you know, potentially need to be confirmed and validated by somebody else who has the professional background within that space.
Yeah, and my point was not to get like a definitive answer, but just, the first thing that went through my mind is, well, Barnum won't even be done, so why would we even talk about it? But potentially, there's a path for that to happen. That's it. Thank you, Peter.
Thank you, Mr. White, and thank you for your work on the project as well, so, and sending us the email to get us thinking about these.
And sending us the email to get us thinking about these things ahead of time, so. More to come, bottom line. As the timeline stretches out, I think we'll have more questions. And again, my intent would be to piggyback this off of a capital budget meeting so that we can have, to Mr. Myloans' point, kind of the biggest window before August 12th, when a vote is required to be able to get our questions answered. And your point is well-taken, Mr. Myloans. With that, thank you again, I appreciate it. And thank you, Mr. White, for your work on it. But more to come, we'll hear more. Moving to Item D, which is amendment to the fee for the use of a Cheshire police vehicle at extra-duty job sites. Mr. Wolf, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Be it resolved that the Town Council approves Resolution Number 070, sorry, 825-4. Be it resolved that the Town Council pursuant to Town Ordinance Section 14-3H hereby amends the fees for the use of a Cheshire police vehicle at extra-duty job sites from $30 per hour to $35 per hour. And be it further resolved that this resolution supersedes any and all previous resolutions establishing such fee.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf, thank you, Mr. Velver. Second and discussion, Mr. Kip.
Sure, I'll be brief. The Town Council, back at the beginning of our operating budget process at our first budget workshop for public safety, discussed and recommended the increase to the fee charge for police vehicles at extra-duty job sites from $30 to $35. The Council will recall, we also made that assumption in the adopted budget. So effectively approving that increase. But by the ordinance, and similar to what we did back in 2022 when we increased it from $25 to $30, we just need an action tonight to formalize pursuant to the ordinance, the increase from $30 to $35, consistent with the approved budget.
Questions? Ms. Allard?
Can you just explain a little bit about the fee structure with respect to, this is a fee for the use of the car. Is there a separate fee for if an officer is needed as well?
Yes, yeah, there's a separate. Yep, but oftentimes, especially for working roadways, and sometimes it's required by the PD, and sometimes the utilities just want to have a vehicle there for added visibility. And so this is the cost for that.
Seeing no other questions, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, motion passes unanimously. Item E is approval of a tax appeal settlement, and we will take that up in executive session. And what I'd like to do is break with our format a little bit and actually go into executive session now to not only include the tax appeal, but a couple other pending litigation items. And then we will come back, vote on the tax appeal, and finish the remainder of the agenda to include Mr. Jascot, Mr. Martelli, Ms. Shepherd, and all members of the council. So I will entertain a motion for that. Thank you, Mr. Walsh, thank you, Mr. Jenks. All those in favor, thank you. We are in executive session, and there will be action and more agendas to follow. So Mike, I would ask that you just bear with us post-executive session.
appeal settlement and Ms. Allard.
Be it resolved that the town council approves resolution number 070825-5, be it resolved that the town council hereby authorizes the execution of a tax appeals stipulated agreement by and between the town of Cheshire and Sarah J L L C for property located at 1257 Peck Lane, and be it further resolved that the town attorney is authorized and directed to execute on behalf of the town set agreement in the form and upon the terms and conditions as presented at this meeting.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Mr. Wolf, thank you. All those in -- our discussion, sorry, I'll offer it. All those in favor, motion passes unanimously by those present. Town managers report. Mr. Kimball.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll try to be brief. You do have a paper copy in front of you, also a version uploaded to the website. This Friday, Bartlam Beats concerts will be kicking off, first of four concerts this summer. Those are on July 11th, this Friday, with heavy hitters, July 18th with American Girl, the Tom Petty tribute band, August 1st, The Zoo, and August 8th, shot down modern classic and country hits. All these shows are 7:00 PM, rain dates, as is tradition, are the following Tuesday. All shows will be at the new Bartlam Park Great Lawn. The stage will be placed in front of the new band shell, which is still under -- presently under construction for at least the first two concerts, and I'll have a little bit more of that on the second page. Just a reminder, and actually, I think Mr. Jinks mentioned this earlier, we are kicking off the first public workshop of the multimodal transportation plan information gathering process. This includes driving, riding bikes, walking, and taking transit, as topics drop in any time on Tuesday, July 22nd, between 7:00 and 9:00 PM at the Cheshire Public Library. Again, that's next, that's in two Tuesdays away, that's July 22nd. Also, just a reminder for the plan of conservation development, we are looking to hear from members of the public. New survey questions have been posted to the P O C D website. The link is below, tai chi dot my social pinpoint dot com forward slash Cheshire P O C D, and also links available on our website. Announced a little bit last night during our budget workshop, we had confirmation today that we were successful in receiving the Connecticut Local Bridge Program grant funding that the council authorized application for back in May. This is successful in seeking the full 50% funding available under the program for the notch road bridge replacement, which is in our five-year capital plan, as just discussed last night. So congratulations. Thank you to the council for their support, and also to our engineering department for identifying this funding source. Just a few projects around town updates. As promised, the band shell update. The contractor for the band shell had experienced some delays in the assembly of the steel frame and the band shell. It will not be completed in time for at least the first two Bartlam Beats concerts. We are hopeful that it could be used for the August 1st and August 8th shows. Everything will depend on the speed at which the woodworking and roof contractor can complete the installation of the tongue and groove woodwork, which you can see in that second picture there that was taken yesterday. You can see the beginning of the wood tongue and groove panels. It's going to look fantastic, so I'm very excited for that. I love how the stain came out, and you can see there the Cheshire design and seal. And also, once they're complete with all the roof work and the metal roof panels above, the final pouring of the top stage of the stage has to be done before it could be used. It won't be totally finished. We're hoping there's an opportunity to use the stage for at least one or two of the concerts, but if not, we have the temporary stage option as well. But the town will be planning an official ribbon cutting on the band shell, which also really celebrates the completion of the Bartlam Park South project to coincide with the Fall Festival, which is, just as a reminder, scheduled for Friday and Saturday, September 12th and 13th. Animal control facility renovations and upgrades. Work began last month, as reported in my last report. With the demolition of the interior fence partitions, external fence has been fully repaired, the gate has been replaced. HVAC work is underway with new ductwork installed, and the outside pad for the new HVAC equipment has been installed. The mason should be on site for the kennel and run wall improvements, and the flooring contractor should be on site in early August. The ceiling grid will then be replaced after all other work is complete. And last, just, I think I had this last time as well, but just a reminder, schedule's been established for the replacement of the Bartlam and pool access drive parking lots. This is scheduled to take place August 4th with milling work, followed by paving August 11th. All of this is, of course, weather dependent. And we have our next regular council meeting, August 12th, and stay tuned for additional capital budget workshops, and encourage everyone to respond to the poll that Noel sent out earlier today for possible capital budget workshop updates. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Just a quick item. I had a constituent talk to me about the Bartlam Park access drives. They almost had an accident driving in towards the pool, and someone was coming out of the parking lot for the pool, didn't know that they were supposed to stop, didn't know who had the right of way, and someone, the person going straight felt they had the right of way. The person coming out of the parking lot thought they could just come out and take a left. Might be worthwhile to look, to talk to Merrick, maybe get a couple of stop signs up on those roads that come into the main road. I think the person coming in towards the pool to the turnaround would have the right of way, but I mean, it's not clear to some people. They think maybe everyone's coming in and taking a right into the pool parking lot. They don't think that someone might go straight there. Just a thought before we have, have, there's no signage at all with the curving and everything going in. It might be a good time to put some signage.
Okay, yeah, we'll have our PD go down there and take a look at it.
Just have someone take a look at it.
They would install the stop sign there. Sure.
One other thing, the, I'm dying for this, the skateboard park, when will that be completed?
I can't wait to get up there.
I have, do you have that? I know it's on our projects webpage. There's a recent update to it.
Is that being paved the same?
Sort of, yes. It is all part of the same, yeah, they are. Right now, we're trying to schedule Tilcon to get in there. The town staff has done a lot of the prep work, if you've seen down there, in order to help control the cost.
The ramps are, the final staff is anticipated to occur between July 24th and August 1st.
Yeah, so end of the month. There's a lot of coordination between the ramp company, which is rehabbing and reinstalling. It's, that square of the paving, I think, is going to be slightly separate from the rest of it. There was originally intended to do all of it at once, but the logistics and, as you can imagine, trying to schedule Tilcon, which rolls up a number of projects, and then weather can throw them off. Because of the ramp sched, the availability of the ramp company coming back at a specific time, I think we ended up having to do a one-off for that little paving portion. But you're right, that originally, we were hoping to somehow do all of it at the exact same time. It just didn't quite work out that way, but the goal is to get the, you know, the skate park, obviously, up as soon as we can so folks can enjoy it.
The other department, anyone else for Sean? The other department status reports are in your packets. Reports of committees of the council, starting to my left, chairman's report. Mr. Wolf, Ms. Allard, Mr. Jinks, Ms. Pearson.
Sustainability committee met on June 17th. The NEF fund currently has $34,509.92. Vince presented regarding the compost programs. It's going to be expanding to Dodge next year. He is applying. There is a deep grant, and so he was going to be working and applying for a deep grant to perhaps cover those costs. If he's successful, then that will free up some of our NEF funds for other possibilities. I know Council Walsh mentioned bulky waste, so maybe that's a possibility. And that's it. And then we talked about what we just passed today, the SMART program, so.
Nothing for miscellaneous, 11 appointments, a liaison reports, again to my left, Mr. Wolf, Ms. Allard.
Public Safety Commission did not meet in June. They didn't have a quorum, but they've done a really good job at ensuring that future meetings would be able to take place. They're going to pursue like a hybrid format to ensure that they can meet a quorum. The next meeting is on July 10th at 6:30, Youth and Human Services. No meeting for June or July. The next meeting there, September 3rd at 5:00.
Thank you. Mr. Jinks.
Just that economic development, I would just direct you to Andrew's excellent report here in the, in the backup.
Ms. Pearson.
Nothing to report.
Mr. Walsh.
Unification is meeting tomorrow. Andrew and I will be going down to the meeting right after this meeting.
[laughter]
8:30 AM.
That's not funny, Mr. Walsh.
But they will, they will be discussing some landscaping around Town Hall and around senior center, as well as many other things.
Same sign applications tomorrow.
Oh, wow. Yeah, a lot of the signs, if you see up north end, are starting to come in now, so.
Mr. Velliber.
No report.
Mr. Mylone. Appointments, none and none. Town attorneys report, you must be all talked out by now, Mr. Donofrio. Council communications, letters, seeing none. Miscellaneous, we've already done executive session, so we can jump right to 15.
Mr. Velliber and Mr. Jinks, all those in favor, motion passes unanimously by those
present, and we, our chairman.